Planning Commission meeting to order of April 24th, 2025. If everybody would make sure your phones are on silent. I always have to check my own. Just that way we don't interrupt any of the speakers. There we go. And then also, on this very day, commissioners, there's a very special event tonight. The NFL Draft will start at 7:00 PM. And the Titans, not in this room, but keep it short so we can get home by 7:00 PM. So we do have the first pick. That's probably out of order. I apologize. But I always try to keep every, the commissioners up to date on great things in Nashville. So we'll go ahead and get started. I appreciate everybody coming down. And the first item up is the adoption of the agenda and commissioners that was sent out earlier. And so is there a motion to adopt? There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose, no, ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. And so we are on to the item C, which is the approval of the April 10th, 2025 minutes. And those commissioners were also, that was also sent out to you earlier. And so is there a motion to adopt the minutes? So motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose, no, ayes have it. Now we are on to the recognition of the council members. And council members, as you know, well, before we do that, we do have, tonight, we do have some Spanish translators in the room. And so they're up front here. And so if y'all just, if you'll say hi. And that way, if there's any questions, we'll be glad to go ahead.
Buenas tardes, soy la intérprete que habla español, Lynn Sailor. Si tienen alguna pregunta, por favor hágamelo saber. Gracias.
Thank you. And we do that just to make sure we have everybody included. And so we really appreciate that. And so now we are on to the recognition of the council members. And we take the council members as we see you all come in. And so first I saw Councilwoman Evans, Councilmember Evans. Come, you want to speak on the item? Okay, perfect, no problem. Thank you for coming. And then Councilmember Hancock, do you want to speak now or?
I'm just here in support of 11 and 13.
Well, here, come up and, come up and just say.
I'm just here in support of 11 and 13, which are currently on consent. But thank you very much for your time. I appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Appreciate you coming down. And then Councilwoman Welsh. On the item, okay. Any other council members? Because there's a lot of people. Oh, hey, councilman, come on up. Councilman, we appreciate you coming. Good seat.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners. I'm Roland Horton. I'm the Metro Councilmember for District 20 in West Nashville. I'm here to speak on two items. Item 29, an SP on Centennial in my district, as well as items 28A and B, rezonings and a UDO for various parcels in District 16. First, for item 29, I'm here in support of the SP on Centennial Boulevard. This parcel holds several businesses currently, including importantly for our purposes, Urban Dog Bar. This regulatory SP expands the scope of permitted uses on the parcel to include pet grooming and related services for potential future business, as well as modifies setback requirements for an opaque fence for the Urban Dog Bar. Both of these aspects are critical components of the SP. This parcel is located on a very busy and polluted corridor with frequent, loud, unpleasant and disruptive industrial truck traffic. The opaque fence is necessary for this business to shield pets and other patrons from this unpleasant aspect and instead create a more pleasant and practical setting for a dog park. The business has worked extensively with NDOT to meet all appropriate safety conditions, including converting a appropriate portion of the fence to chain link to address potential safety and line of sight concerns. Taken, together with permitting dog grooming activities, this SP is therefore supportive of our neighborhood's goals of creating a more walkable and urban and self-sufficient neighborhood where residents can continue to meet more of their daily needs within the neighborhood and not having to get in their car and drive across the city, but have those opportunities right here in the neighborhood. And at a time when many of our loved neighborhood businesses have had to close their door or are struggling, Urban Dog Bar has been a significant success and has already grown into a loved and intrinsic part of the neighborhood. I think it's important that we continue to allow them to succeed by approving this SP. I ask you to vote in favor, please. The second item I'm here for is 28A and B, the rezoning and UDO of various parcels in District 16. I'm here despite being a District 20 Metro Councilmember because as the planning department's Housing and Infrastructure Study noted, housing that's built or not built in one part of the city affects the rest of the city as well, including those of us in West Nashville. Our city is in the midst of a housing crisis of unprecedented and worsening severity. This is a crisis which has left 9% of our homes, only 9% of our homes affordable for a typical Nashvilleian, and that drops to less than 1% for a typical black or Hispanic family. This crisis is not the necessary or inevitable consequence of a growing or vibrant city, but the result of policy decisions that we've made and failed to make as a city. The solutions to this problem are also clearly identified in study after study. We need to build more homes and we need to build more types of homes. The proposal here is a direct implementation of those identified solutions. RM 20 and RM 40 are the only zoning districts capable of producing the missing middle housing typologies that our city needs. Housing types that can offer great affordable options for residences and keep affordability within reach. I think it's critical that we move beyond just studying the problem and move into the implementation of solutions. Councilmember Welsh's proposal is both thoughtful and measured, implementing clearly identified best practices. I urge you to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Horton. Appreciate it. All right. So this is a good time to remind everybody. You know, we always, we appreciate everybody coming down. Some, some of you have been here a lot. Some of you, you may be here for the first time. And so we don't cheer, we don't clap, we don't yell. We always address the chair and we always keep it professional. If we don't do that, then we'll stop the meeting, we'll clear the room. And so we always try to be very, very professional. We want everybody to speak at your time. And we want to hear you and we want to, we listen. I would argue that this commission is probably one of the commissions. I can't say that because I can't talk bad about the other commissions. But I do know that we are very thoughtful and we appreciate you coming down. So we always, no booing, no chanting from either side. We appreciate you coming down. All right. Any other council members? I didn't see any. So next, we're on item E, which is items for deferral or withdrawal.
Our items for deferral or withdrawal tonight. Starting on page four of your agenda, item number four, 2024 SP 048001, 4222 and 4278 Central Pike. The staff recommendation is to defer this to May 8th. Item number five, 2025 SP 005001, Martin and Merritt. Staff recommendation is defer to May 8th. Item number seven, 2025 SP 007001, 13905 Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff recommendation is defer to May 8th. On page five of your agenda, item number eight, 2025 SP 009001, 1004 and 1104 Cass Street. Staff recommendation is defer to May 8th. Item number 10, 2025 SP 019001, 5000 Ashland City Highway. Staff recommendation is defer to May 8th. Item number 12, 2024 S 139001, Shular Clarksville Highway. Staff recommendation is defer to May 8th. On page six of your agenda, item number 14, 2025 S 037001, Madeline Drive. Staff recommendation is defer to May 8th. Item number 15, 2024 Z 069 PR 001. Staff recommendation is defer to May 8th. Item number 16, 2025 Z 020 PR 001. Staff recommendation is defer to May 8th. On page seven of your agenda, item number 18, 2025 SP 021001, Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff recommendation is defer to May 8th. Item number 19, 2025 SP 023001, The Courtside Enclave. Staff recommendation is defer to May 8th. Item number 20, 2025 SP 024001, Kings Lane. Staff recommendation is defer to May 8th. Item number 21, 2025 SP 025001, Radnor Corner SP. Staff recommendation is defer to May 8th. On page eight of your agenda, item number 23, 2025 S 066001, 109 Paula Drive. Staff recommendation is defer to May 8th. Item number 25, 2003 UD 003011, Bridgeview UDO, Section 6 and 7. Staff recommendation is defer to May 8th. And that concludes our items for deferral or withdrawal.
Thank you, Amelia. And so make sure I get these correct. And commissioners, these are the following items for deferral or withdrawal. Item number four, five, seven, eight, 10, 12, 14, 15, 16, 18, 19, 20, 21, 23, and 25. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, commissioners, you've heard the items for deferral or withdrawal. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second? Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose, no, ayes have it. And those items are deferred or withdrawn. And Amelia, before you start this, I want to welcome you back because she had a baby. And so she's, everybody give her a round of applause. Oh, and it's, it's beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. And in this picture I'm looking at, it says, this is my first rodeo. So T-shirt. So Amelia, congratulations.
Thank you.
It's a beautiful thing. All right. Until they get to be teenagers.
We've got a couple of years.
Everybody knows that, right? We're all here. All right. So we're on to, I know that was completely out of order. Sorry, Vice Chair. We are on item F, which is the consent agenda, Amelia.
Okay, items on the consent agenda tonight. So first we will read through all of the items that are identified as being tentative on your agenda. We will ask if there's anyone in opposition present. If there is opposition present, please raise your hand and we will mark those items to be on the agenda to be heard. And I will announce that those items will be heard. If no opposition is present, the item will be placed on the consent agenda. As notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. Starting on page three of your agenda with item number one, the CIB for the fiscal year 2025, 2026. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number two, 2016 SP 055003, 1324 Second Avenue North Amendment. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. On page four of your agenda, item number three, 2024 SP 036001, 832 West Trinity. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. On page five of your agenda, item number nine, 2025 SP 016001, Batson Homes Stewart's Ferry Pike. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the agenda to be heard. Item number 11, 2025 NHC 001001, Marlin Meadows. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? Okay, this item will be on the agenda to be heard. On page six of your agenda, item number 13, 2025 S 029001, Neely's Bend. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. On page seven of your agenda, item number 22, 2024 S 103001, Oakwood Preserve. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. On page eight, item number 24, 19269 P 005, 5710 Hickory Plaza. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 26, 2025 Z 024 PR 001. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 27, 2025 Z 032 PR 001. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 29, 2025 SP 022001, 5701 Centennial Boulevard. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. And now I will go ahead and run through those items with their captions and recommendations. As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. And sorry, I should have mentioned when I was running through. We did publish items 28A and 28B on the tentative consent agenda, but we have just decided to remove those preemptively. So everyone who's here for those items. But now we'll run through the consent agenda.
Chairman, may I just suggest we just clarify what was, what Amelia was saying? So items 28A and B, which are 2025 Z 36, the, and 2025 UD, the District 16 work, will be heard. That's what was being said.
Okay, items on our consent agenda tonight. Starting on page three, item number one, the CIB fiscal year 2025, 2026. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number two, 2016 SP 055003, 1324 North, Second Avenue North Amendment. This is a request to amend a specific plan located at 1324 Second Avenue North to adjust the permitted square footage and height. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. On page four of your agenda, item number three, 2024 SP 036001, 832 West Trinity. This is a request to rezone from R8 to SP to permit 17 multifamily residential units along West Trinity Lane. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. On page six of your agenda, item number 13, 2025 S 029001, Neely's Bend. This is a request for a final plat to create one lot and shift lot lines along Neely's Bend Road. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including a variance to Section 4 of the subdivision regulations. On page seven of your agenda, item number 22, 2024 S 103001, Oakwood Preserve. This is a request for a final plat to remove the reserve parcel status and create three lots located for properties along Allenwood Drive and Bethwood Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. On page eight of your agenda, item number 24, 19269 P 005, 5710 Hickory Plaza. This is a request to revise the preliminary plan and for final site plan approval for a portion of a PUD located at 5710 Hickory Plaza. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 26, 2025 Z 024 PR 001. This is a request to rezone from RS 5 to RS 6A for property located at 1435 Meridian Street. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 27, 2025 Z 032 PR 001. This is a request to rezone from RS 5 to RS 6A for property located at 2908 Delaware Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 29, on page nine of your agenda, 2025 SP 022001, 5701 Centennial Boulevard. This is a request to rezone from CS to SP zoning for property located at 5701 Centennial Boulevard to permit a mixed use development. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including the added condition distributed in the memo to the Planning Commissioners and disapprove without all conditions. And under item H, Other Business, item number 33, to accept the Director's Report and approve administrative items.
Thank you, Amelia. And so commissioners and Amelia, make sure these are correct. These are items to be passed all at the same time on the consent agenda. And those are, and here are the following items. Items number one, two, three, 13, 22, 24, 26, 27, 29, and 33. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, commissioners, you've heard the items to pass on the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Motion and a second? Any other discussion? I'll make sure. Seeing none.
Chairman, forgive me. Chairman, did you say 13, 17, and 24? Amelia, can you confirm that 13 is supposed to be on the consent agenda?
Yes.
And 17?
Oh.
Definition of family? No, okay, thank you. All right, forgive me. Thank you. Okay. And then 22?
Is on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Forgive me, Chairman.
All right, commissioners, let's start this over one more time. Thank you, Director. You know, we always try to get these correct for the record. So we, on these following items will be on the consent agenda to be passed all at one time. And here are the following items. Items number one, two, three, 13, 22, 24, 26, 27, 29, and 33. All right, I'm getting a thumbs up. Any discussion? But hold on one second. Before we do that, part of this, item number one, which is the capital improvements budget, and I know that during the work session it came up a little bit. I just want to say thank you to Greg Claxton. Appreciate him and his team for all the hard work. A lot goes into that, a lot of planning. I remember when I was a lot younger, when we just started doing that. And it has really improved the communication between the departments and them having a plan. So I just want to say thank you. I know it's on the consent agenda. Greg's talked a lot today already in the workshop. So I just want to acknowledge that, commissioner. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose, no, ayes have it and those items are adopted. Which brings us to the following items to be considered in public hearing. Items, we have one, two, three, five items to be heard tonight. And those are items six, nine, 11, 17, and 28. And so those items will be on public hearing tonight. And I do also, I'm going to go through the process for folks that have never been to the commission before. So how we do this is the staff will do the presentation, then we'll open the public hearing. And that's when the applicant will have 10 minutes. They can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal. Then anyone wishing to speak in support of it will line up behind the microphone. You have two minutes to speak and we have the timer right there. And you'll come up and speak to the microphone. You'll, you'll tell us your name and in general where you're from. We don't require address for safety purposes. We just changed our rules recently. And so we appreciate everybody abiding by that. But we definitely need to get your name on the record. And then after anyone wishing to speak in support, then we'll take anyone wishing to speak in opposition. Then the applicant will have a rebuttal. And then after that, we'll do the council member and then we'll close the public hearing. And that's when the commission has our discussion. So appreciate everybody coming down. And we are on item number six.
Right, Dustin Shane, Staff Planner. Item six is the Briarwood Townhome SP update. So this has been before you before. This is the site plan that was submitted, attached multifamily residential, moving down into two unit clusters as you, as you move south, right there on Jones Avenue. So some case history. This was deferred at the February 27th Planning Commission meeting. A public hearing was held and closed at that meeting. And at that meeting, the commission directed the applicant and staff to do several things. One was to hold a community meeting that was done on March 19th. Another thing was to evaluate the safety impacts to Jones at the proposed intersection, evaluate the separation distances along that street. We did that in consultation with NDOT. They confirmed that sufficient space exists and the minimums can be met. Another thing was to further evaluate the consistency of the plan of policy. Staff dug in there and found that it met the infill provisions of the maintenance policy and also supported the supplemental policies called for more multimodal infrastructure in the neighborhood. Another thing was to reevaluate the feasibility of that Oakwood extension. In consultation with NDOT, we confirmed that those grades do make that road connection down to Jones infeasible. And then finally, to provide an opportunity to hear from the council member. And that was done at the March 27th meeting. At that meeting, the application was deferred again at the request of the applicant. The council member raised several community concerns then. One was to strengthen the traffic calming requirement. We've done that with a new condition that we've consulted with NDOT on that will have the applicant create a traffic calming plan and establish an escrow account for these improvements prior to getting their grading permit. And, excuse me. And so that was vetted with NDOT. And so that will require them to contribute to those improvements when the community is ready for them. Another thing was to require that pedestrian connection up to Oakwood. So that original condition we have has been strengthened. And so that connection will be provided with this development. Another thing was to look at pedestrian connections north to Hart Lane to make sure those are possible. That was, that will be done through the conservation greenway easement, which is being required. And that will give Metro the ability and the, to extend that route northward in the future if that opportunity presents itself. And then finally, that the private drives and sidewalks should be publicly accessible. And that's being done with a condition requiring a public access easement over those. So our recommendation with all that is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. And so what, commissioners, what makes this case different is that we've already heard this. We closed the public hearing. And so we're on deliberation. I appreciate the presentation. And so Vice Chair, do you want to start us off in our deliberation?
So I have a question. I was here on the 27th of February, but I was not here when it was discussed again on the March 27th. Did you review the March 27th tape? I think we have plenty of people.
We have a quorum just about.
Yeah. Sorry, Vice Chair. Sorry, Chair.
Vice Chair, you can abstain, sir.
I will be abstaining.
All right, all right. Commissioner Smith, you want to lead us off in discussion?
Sure, thank you. This one we have discussed once or twice. And I know there was some heartburn about with, about the street and making sure that was safe and responsible and meeting the plans. It seems like staff has done good work in both confirming that and also making some new conditions to aid hopefully the impact of this development. Also remember, I think from our February meeting, my thoughts on this were fairly positive, in line with staff recommendation. I think it accomplishes a lot of the policy goals for this area. And I'm inclined to support staff recommendation.
Any other discussion? Anybody? Discussion? How about a motion, Commissioner?
With regards to item six, Briarwood Townhome SP, I move to approve with conditions.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose, no, ayes have it. And item number six is adopted. So that brings us to. So that brings us to
This is item number nine on tonight's agenda. This is a request for preliminary SP approval to permit up to twenty-four two-family lots and two-single-family lots for a total of fifty residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The site is approximately seventeen acres and consists of a portion of a parcel located at fifteen oh one Stewart's Ferry Pike. The parcel has been zoned RS fifteen since nineteen ninety-eight and has developed with a single-family residential use. Surrounding properties have developed with single-family residential uses with two-family residential uses in the broader area. The site is located within the T-three suburban neighborhood evolving policy area. The T-three suburban neighborhood evolving policy intends to create and enhance suburban residential neighborhoods with more housing choices, improved connectivity, and moderate density development patterns. The site plan proposes twenty-four two-family residential lots and two-single-family residential lots for a total of fifty residential units on twenty-six lots. The proposed lots are oriented towards two new public streets. The proposed public streets include a connection to the existing Gin Oaks Pass to the west and a stub street to the north, which includes a temporary turnaround, but will be platted as right-of-way to the boundary of the site to allow for future connectivity. These new streets also have sidewalks built to local street standards. The plan proposes architectural and landscaping standards and also includes architectural elevations. Reviewing the plan against the T-three suburban neighborhood evolving policy, staff found the plan incorporates several characteristics of the policy by providing a moderate dense development pattern, improved vehicular connectivity through the use of connections to existing streets, and proposing additional connection to the north, and design characteristics and standards consistent with the policy. And with that, staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions.
Thank you, sir. And so commissioners, we'll open this item for public hearing, and is the applicant in the room? Come on up. Welcome. And you have ten minutes, and you can save two of the ten minutes for rebuttal.
All right, great. Thank you. My name is Adam Crunk with Crunk Engineering, here representing the applicant and future developer. I just wanted to say that we agree with staff report, agree with the staff conditions, and seek approval this evening. In the, in the request for this development and SP zoning, we wanted to be able to create a subdivision that did match the context of the surrounding neighborhoods with a very similar density to the neighborhood that's immediately to the west. Believe we were able to do that, as was evidenced by the traffic counts that were listed in the staff report only being about a dozen additional peak hour trips above what a traditional RS fifteen development would be. We wanted to also abide by the context of the area by creating an, or by leaving completely undisturbed open space adjacent to Stewart's Ferry Pike, and then approximately three-acre area in the northwest corner of the property that would remain undisturbed with all trees to remain. The, the product that's being proposed here is a very similar one that's been provided in this area before. It's predominantly marketed toward those that are fifty-five and older. It's not restricted to fifty-five and older, but part of the reason it's marketed that way is the HOA maintains the properties surrounding the homes. This, these, these buildings are constructed on flat slabs, zero entry from the garage with the side-loaded garages, and the comparable developments are Bridgewater and then the reserve at Seven Points, which is about three-quarters of a mile away from this site. We believe that this development would be an asset to Metro's housing stock, and would be happy to answer any questions, and we'll reserve the two minutes in case we need to, need to talk afterward. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll reserve your two minutes. Anyone wishing to speak in support? In support, come on up. Yeah, this is support first, and then we want to make sure we get everybody. Okay. No one wishes?
Do you want to speak now?
Yes, council. Well, and Council Lady, generally what we do is we have you all go last, if that, if that's okay. Although you can speak now. Okay. All right, Council Lady. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up. If you'll line up just behind the podium, that would be great. And then you have two minutes, please state your name. We appreciate you guys coming down. Oh, sir, you'll have to hand that over here. Yeah, hand, hand it to the staff over here, and we'll, we'll take care of it.
And Chairman, he has five minutes because he wrote in and requested to speak on behalf of his association.
Excellent. So just for clarification for the crowd, under our rules, the leader of a neighborhood association or that sort of, the leader of the neighbor, they, pre-written and pre-request, they get, get five minutes. Only one person can do that. Then everybody else gets two minutes. Okay? Just so you all know our rules. All right. Go ahead, and please state your name.
Thank you. My name is Anderson Clark. I've lived for thirty-plus years on the one-mile stretch of Old Hickory Boulevard from the intersection of Stewart's Ferry Pike into the Cook Recreation Area. I'm speaking on behalf of a group of neighbors from the area, and we would like to oppose the presentation. Our group of, of neighbors would have been here a little, perhaps in more numbers, had we not known that the sign announcing the meeting still advertises March the tenth as the time of this meeting. But in any case, I would like to speak for the people. We respect the right of a landowner to develop his property as zoned. We also respect the right of the neighborhood community under Metro Planning to respond to the impact that any proposal would have on the neighborhood. I could speak to a number of concerns: water and sewage, blasting of limestone rock during construction, negligible green space for community, health and interaction, Ruby Major Elementary School enrollment, emergency evacuation from the peninsula. These issues were set out in a Facebook post by one of our neighbors, Greg Wathen, a retired TWRA officer who is very much a neighbor in our situation. I would like to focus on the traffic infrastructure situation, which is bad now, and if this is going to be adopted, will be even worse. During my three decades residency, the narrow two-lane road outlined in red on the maps that have come around to you, from Bell Road down the South New Hope Road to Stewart's Ferry, over to Old Hickory Boulevard, and then down into the Cook Recreation Area, has been the same as it was thirty years ago when I moved there. The roads have not expanded, the shoulders have not miraculously appeared, they're set beside the asphalt, and many of the people in our area like to walk with and without dogs, and the, but the road is a pretty narrow road to get through. On, yesterday, at about eight oh eight, I was going home, and I saw bumper-to-bumper traffic from the South, the South New Hope Road all the way to the stoplight at Bell Road. And the people who live in the neighborhood have had a longstanding complaint that during the traffic times, it's really dangerous and difficult to get out of their driveways onto South New Hope Road. Many of the residents who are here would like to say that the traffic problem is the main problem. I've watched the handiwork of developers over the years create subdivisions along South New Hope Road, and even to the small stretch of Stewart's Ferry that we're talking about here, there are already two subdivisions. We have Cook's Landing composed of forty-two units. A bit further up the hill and back across the road, we have Towering Oaks subdivision with eighty-six homes. The requests before you now will back up to the Towering Oaks subdivision as your aerial picture shows. Cook's Landing and Towering Oaks make a total of a hundred and twenty-eight units. With one or two vehicles per unit, these two subdivisions already add passage of some one hundred and fifty to two hundred vehicles, morning and evening, to the current traffic volumes past the entrance of the proposed subdivision. This planning request would add another fifty units, possibly another hundred vehicles, morning and evening to the present infrastructure. These subdivision vehicles would, do not include the number of people who live on past the subdivisions down as far as the Cook Recreation Area. As a side note, across the road from this request, I noticed recently that engineers were placing stakes and flags to develop some forty acres there. According to the neighborhood understanding, some eighty additional units will be proposed. Such would add another hundred or hundred-and-fifty vehicle units, morning and evening on the same short stretch of Stewart's Ferry, feeding into the already heavily traveled South New Hope Road. Another fact, not.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry.
Your five minutes, time flies when you're having fun at the Planning Commission, so.
Thank you.
I apologize.
I have one more paragraph. May I pass this along to?
Sure. You can pass it on to?
All right. Thank you.
To someone else to read. All right, next, come on up. Welcome.
Hello, thank you. Thank you for letting me speak. Hi, I'm Andy Merrill. I live close to this location, and I'm opposed to this SP. I have three points. First, I would like to address the analysis that claims this proposed special permit promotes a broader range of housing types, including single-family and two-family residential options. I ask if two families are living in two lots, and forty-eight families are living in twenty-four lots, does this genuinely enhance a community's housing diversity? Secondly, the Donaldson Hermitage Old Hickory Community Plan emphasizes the need for improved pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular connectivity. However, I must ask, how does this proposal improve pedestrian connectivity when it includes sidewalks that lead to nowhere? How does it improve bicycle access when our neighborhood's roads lack adequate shoulders for safe riding? Moreover, how does it address vehicular connectivity when there are no planned improvements for our already congested connecting roads, which are further congested by a hundred and forty thousand vehicles that visit Cook annually? Lastly, this plan overlooks a critical safety concern. Residents west of New Hope Road and north and south of Stewart's Ferry would rely on a single road for evacuation during emergencies. Approving developments without considering the potential consequences of risking evacuation gridlock during a crisis is a glaring oversight. Recent events such as the fires in Pacific Palisades and Lahaina have starkly demonstrated the dangers of such decisions. I'm asking that you prioritize our community's safety, connectivity, and well-being over short-term gains and deny the applicant's request for preliminary SP to permit the fifty residential units. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, welcome.
My name is Mary Clark. I'm a resident of Stewart's Ferry Old Turkey Boulevard neighborhood, and I'm a board member of the five oh one C-three Friends of Cook Recreation Area, which is dedicated to the care of Cook and the area surrounding this part of Percy Priest Lake. Thank you in advance for hearing my concerns today. Our entire neighborhood backs up to the U.S. Corps of Engineer lands surrounding Percy Priest Lake, as you could see on the maps. As has been mentioned, the entrance to the proposed subdivision is just one-point-five miles along a dead-end road to Cook, a park that is visited by over a hundred and forty thousand cars annually, as per the Corps' own tracking device. I see that the water study is noted in the proposal as incomplete. I think it is important to explain that all of the land in this area is karst land. Karst regions are particularly vulnerable to groundwater contamination due to their unique geological structure and rapid water flow. Any activity that compromises the integrity of the karst system can contaminate our water. Approving this development without careful research and understanding of the potential damage to the karst is dangerous, not only for the people of this neighborhood, but also the greater Tennessee community that uses Cook Recreation for enjoyment, fishing, birding, relaxation, et cetera. I oppose the approval of this application as it does not give sufficient information regarding potential lasting damage to the karst environment and the people of the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, come on up. Welcome.
Hi. I'm Mark Abernathy. I've been Earl, Earl's neighbor for, since 2014. I have the two and a half acres just west of his property. It's true what the gentlemen said and the ladies say about the state of the road, the neighbors, they lose mailboxes all the time because the trucks pulling trailers and the campers and everything else. And I do know that when I see snowplows come, they get to the end of South New Hope, they turn left, and we never see them again. So I don't know what happens if they turn right, where this development is going to come and go every day, but you should probably look into that also. On a personal note, when the people, when the development's done or under construction in the evening, when they turn off of the road, their headlights are going to go right across my front yard, my front porch, my master bedroom window, they'll go to the kitchen, they'll go to the back deck, it'll shine right in my garage. When I look at the plan, the scanned plan, I don't see anything to block all of that noise pollution or to separate their new housing from the old housing. So I would just ask that you look at the light abatement, the noise abatement, and the fact that the road that you're putting all these people on is not a well-maintained road. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Come on up.
Is it possible for me to give him one more five minutes?
Do, do what, sir? No. No.
No, we can't transfer.
No. We can't transfer time.
I'm Mike Maitland.
But we appreciate it.
I have similar concerns.
You can read his last paragraph, though. Go ahead.
Mainly about the, the traffic, the same, and with the way the road is, the one, the four-way stop, it's definitely going to add a lot of congestion there. And as far as looking at the development, separating, is, what there, maybe, what I'm really trying to say is his same concern, turning in and the noise and the traffic, and if it's fifty-five and older, maybe the volume of the, their radios won't be so loud, but that was my concern with coming off of Stewart's Ferry and wondering if anyone had looked into coming off of New Hope Road rather than turning and congesting the four-way stop there, or the, the stop sign, because the property, there's property for sale that joins this property backs up to it on New Hope Road at the moment. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So before we get going, I, we love children here, we just, if, if we could just make sure that, try to. So that's the rebuttal. No, I'm just kidding. Try to, try, go ahead.
I wanted to say one more thing about the traffic.
Ma'am, you, please, state your name for the record.
My name is Frances Clark. I'm finishing my husband's paper and my own. So for two years, the counter from Cook Recreation Area shows, one year, one hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two vehicles, and that's the other year, one hundred and fifty-five, one hundred and eight vehicles. So it's a heavily traveled road. I want to talk about widening the road. The road is, the shoulders of the road are almost nonexistent. There are many people who are walking their dogs and just walking on those roads, and it's been dangerous for the entire time we've lived there. We also need to provide speed bumps. They need to be a part of this plan because we have major speed problems. It's very, very dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? We'll make sure we get everybody. All right, seeing none, two-minute rebuttal.
With me this evening is Frank Batson of Frank Batson Homes who'd like to speak in rebuttal.
Thank you for the opportunity, Frank Batson, Frank Batson Homes. I'm a residential home builder. This is our fiftieth year being a builder developer still local. The community that we're proposing, we've done three similar to those in the Hermitage area. They are an upscale attached unit, two car side garages, all brick, handicapped, big demand for this product, predominantly an active adult product in regard to two things, the traffic, these people don't get up at eight o'clock and go to work. And the other thing that's very important is the fact that there are no children in three of those communities that we have built, because they don't have children, so no impact on Ruby Majors. These are upscale units in the sixties, probably seven hundred thousand per side, maintained by an HOA. We've done three of these other communities in the area, and they're very nice communities. So thank you.
Thank you. And council lady. Glad you come down.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. So I wanted to, I guess, provide some context kind of around this particular street as you were deliberating. So under the Cooper administration, we had some activity with the Army Corps of Engineers who were interested in privatizing Cook Recreation Area that impacts all the residents around there. So all the folks that you're hearing from were instrumental in making sure we did not have an RV park at Cook Recreation Area and triggering a lot of the issues with traffic and safety and everything that you've been hearing about this afternoon. Back in 2023, I did have an opportunity, or a council had an opportunity to open up Nashville Next and particularly kind of target some areas we thought needed a little bit of extra attention and discussion. And so Stewart's Ferry was one of those areas. I was interested in going from neighborhood evolving down to neighborhood maintenance, just to give it a little bit more of a buffer in that particular area, because everything else is neighborhood evolving right around there. Unfortunately, we could not get consensus amongst property owners. Everybody on paper seemed to think that it was a great idea, but then people started opting out and it ended up making not any sense. And so we ended up not moving forward with that, with planning. I had a community meeting in November of 2024, and the consensus basically from the community meeting, the majority of people were feeling like development's going to come down here, can we have a good project, can we have a builder that we trust? And Batson Homes is one that is a very trustworthy builder in Donaldson Hermitage Old Hickory. When I think about like, we're coming to, in two years, or you know, in two years, our term is going to be over, so who is going to have my seat in two years? And how am I leaving projects for that next person? Because that's the timeline that we're likely to see something actually be built. And my experience with Batson Homes has been very positive, that they don't leave people in the lurch when it comes to kind of ongoing conversations about any issues. And so all the other things have been addressed in here. Ruby Major Elementary is actually under capacity pretty dramatically because we have so many single-family homes, they don't turn over like some of our other elementary schools, and so we don't have a lot of new families with children. And so I don't think that that is a, an issue. But traffic that they're describing, I live right down the street by the four-way stop, it is a problem. I went a light, it didn't rise to the occasion in the capital improvements budget. Hopefully, I can advocate and make a change there before the end of the term. But several of the things that they talked about, I share their concerns, but ultimately I'm trying to make a good balanced decision because I know that the owner wants to develop. I think going to a villa-style product versus single-family, the density is not that much higher, and it feels like a reasonable direction. And so thank you for your time.
Thank you, council lady. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Marshall, will you start us off?
All right, thank you. So from what I am assessing here, it certainly looked like a viable project, and I lean towards supporting staff recommendation with several conditions that have been added here, about nineteen of them. I'm glad to hear that the council lady sort of lives in that area and knows the condition of the traffic and all of that, and I'm sure that will be addressed properly as they move forward. I agree that the developer has the experience of doing this type of development in the past, and I'm sure that those things that the community is bringing out will be addressed properly. So based on what I see so far and feel, I think I would support staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Commissioner Dundon, and then Stewart.
I, I agree, and I just have a quick question. And just so people know, that we're, we're voting on the zoning change, we're not approving any kind of design plan, and I just wanted to make sure that's correct, like the, the issues that were brought up with stormwater and how there was a preliminary review only, those reviews will occur as the plan is designed. Is that correct?
Sure. So with any specific plan rezoning process, the preliminary SP, which is what this is, establishes the uses and the number that are permitted, and it makes sure that there is enough space set aside for stormwater needs. The next step, if this were approved, would be detailed construction drawings that are, that must meet all of the technical standards of our reviewing agencies, including NDOT and stormwater. Thank you.
Commissioner Clifton.
I think a lot of concerns of the neighborhood have been addressed well, and the council members pointed that out. I'm, I'm still concerned about it a little bit because of the fragility of the area. I was part of an effort at Cook Recreation Area just a couple of years ago to try to change the mind of, of the Corps. And we did. And it has been worth it to see the area maintained so wonderfully. I think a lot of the concerns are not well-placed because I do think a lot of this particular developer, and I think a lot of it is, and the timing of it is just not quite yet where we fix those things. So I'm, I don't think it's a terrible plan, and I think it will be fine if it's built. I do think it could be improved upon, and I'm not going to be able to support it today because I think a few of these concerns could be flushed out and made, made conditions of this.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Leslie.
Yes, I have a question in terms of, most of the opposition is about traffic control. And the traffic and parking recommendations talks about appropriate stop control, is that inside the subdivision or is that on the Stewart Ferry's Pike Road?
The NDOT condition for traffic and parking is for stop control within the, the SP within the subdivision. So it'd be on the, the streets within, that are proposed within the SP.
So it has nothing to do at this point with either widening Stewart's Ferry or addressing the four-way stop at this time?
So the, the portion of the SP that does have frontage along Stewart's Ferry, there is a condition with NDOT to have an improvement on that portion of Stewart's Ferry Pike, but that would be the, what, any improvement on Stewart's Ferry Pike.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Allen.
I had a similar question. When NDOT is reviewing applications, I know some of the traffic concerns seem to be a little bit broader than this site here. So when they're reviewing the application, are they considering just the immediate properties or how wide are they considering traffic impact when they're looking at just a single site?
Yes, so NDOT will review an application, and there is a certain standard of whether the development would reach the level of requiring an MMTA analysis. And with this development, due to the number of units on the site, an MMTA was not required. An MMTA is a multimodal transportation analysis.
Any other discussion? Vice chair.
I guess I had a question for Commissioner Clifton, if, some of the, I'm, I'm interested a little bit more about the Cooks' recreational area and your concerns relative to that.
Mostly I brought it up because it opened my eyes to what a wonderful area this is and, and how, how the people living there and close to there were so committed to it. And they basically organized and presented their information in a way that the Corps had to agree with in terms of what they were trying to do being a detriment to the area, and they just left. And I guess that's not necessarily the only reason I'm against it. I think some of the other concerns have been brought up and could be fixed. I'm, I'm not saying that nothing else should ever be out there. I'm sorry, I'm sure some of the folks think that, but I don't see it that way. I just think it could be improved with a little bit more time, and no, I don't know what I would recommend right now to go into a motion on that, but it's just a very fragile area, one that we need to take special care of. That's all.
Any other discussion? We'll need a motion? It's time for a motion.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the staff recommendation with conditions and disapprove out all conditions.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye. Those no. One no. And it passes. All right. Thank you, everybody, for coming down. We are on to item number eleven. And we're having a little technical difficulty real quick on our screen, so just give us a, a minute and we'll start back up.
Okay, Selena Konigstein presenting item number eleven tonight. The request is. The request is to apply a neighborhood conservation overlay district. Staff's recommendation is to approve. The zoning across the entire subject site is RS-20 and will remain, however, conservation, a neighborhood conservation overlay will be applied in addition to the RS-20 zoning. There are a couple of policies in the area, suburban neighborhood maintenance, which is intended to maintain the general character developed suburban residential neighborhoods, and the policy also supports the preservation of existing features. There's also some conservation, which is intended to preserve environmentally sensitive land features through protection remediation. Per the Metro Historic Zoning Commission, Marlin Meadows is significant as an antebellum farm that became a mid-century subdivision, reflecting the national trend of suburbanization in the middle of the twentieth century, and as an excellent example of mid-century architecture. The Metro Historic Zoning Commission determined the request met criteria one and three of section seventeen thirty-six one-twenty of the code and the adoption of the existing sign guidelines with a new chapter for Marlin Meadows to be consistent with the Secretary of Interior standards. With the preliminary findings of the housing and infrastructure study presented to council in March and final recommendations to be presented in June, staff would have preferred this request to wait until those recommendations were finalized. However, since the Metro Historic Zoning Commission has approved the request and planning relies heavily on their recommendations, staff recommends approval.
Thank you. And so commissioners, we'll open this item for public hearing, and council lady, you're the applicant.
I am.
So come on up, and we appreciate you coming down, and go ahead.
All right. So thank you again for being here tonight. I know that you have a long one ahead of you, so I'll try not to make it too much longer. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about the history of this application. In January of 2019, my predecessor, council member Bill Pridemore, was approached by the neighborhood about doing something to help preserve the quaint feel of the neighborhood. And that was passed on to me in 2022, where I started discussions with staff to try to decide what we could do, what different options were, as well as talking to some of my colleagues on council about what they've done in their particular districts. So there were a few different things that were considered. Rezoning was not an option because we have so much size differential on the different lots in this particular neighborhood. But the, the conservation overlay is something that was considered as well as a historic zoning overlay. So I posted about this in my newsletter for several months in 2023, and then in 2024, we started having some community meetings. We also posted on the Neelys Bend Facebook page to let that get to an even broader audience. So we had three specific to Marlin Meadows community meetings in early 2024. I have two meetings every single month, so we had additional conversations from people that stopped by my meetings throughout 2024. And then we applied in 2025 with the conservation overlay. We decided that a historic overlay would be too restrictive and wasn't really what the community was intending, and the conservation overlay is a much lighter lift, and, and that's what we're here to discuss today. So I'd be happy to hear supporters in opposition.
Thank you, council lady. Appreciate you coming down, and of course, we'll take you last as well. So anyone wishing to speak in support? Come on up.
I'm Robbie Jones. I live in Canton Pass neighborhood, and I'm like a lawyer, I come with exhibits. Does pass also off to you? There's exhibits A, B, C, and D.
Very organized.
I sent an email with a lot of words, and my neighbor Sasha Laster also sent an email with a lot of words about why we support this. We weren't sure if you got them, so we printed out hard copies. At the Historic Zoning Commission meeting, Commissioner Smith, who also sits on that commission, had reservations about the neighborhood's historic and architectural significance. Subsequently, I asked the state historic preservation office to issue a formal determination of whether the neighborhood was eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places, and then April first, they did so. They said it was eligible for the National Register for architectural significance. Shared a copy of that letter with you as well in the packet. So I just wanted to mention that some of you have been a professional preservation planner in Nashville for over thirty years, lived in Marlin Meadows for ten years, restored my ranch house, and it won the city's first preservation award for a ranch house. As part of my work, I wrote a history of the neighborhood, which I published on my blog, which is, there's a link to in the email, so there's lots of information floating around. Sasha and I started talking to Bill Pridemore in 2019, as Councilman Hancock mentioned, and we started sort of talking about it, having conversations, just more teardowns came into Neelys Bend and new developments, we sort of moved forward with Councilman Hancock to get to where we are today. The, the main thing is we wanted to also note that the Historic Zoning Commission said that ninety percent of the houses in Marlin Meadows, of the three hundred houses, would contribute to the overlay through their integrity of their historic nature. And I just want to close with that we feel like that it's, it's without doubt the neighborhood's architecturally, historically significant, it's without doubt the majority of the neighbors want it. I have a petition in there, I shared with you guys, we've gathered over a dozen signatures, we've talked to our neighbors, and so we request that you approve of this overlay application. Thank you so much.
Hold on one second, I got, I got a lot of paperwork here. Yeah, there we go, hold on, here we go. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? All right, seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up, welcome. If everybody will come on up and get close to the front, and then we'll.
Right there? Awesome. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Mannan Hall. I'm a renter in District Three at sixteen twenty-nine Good Day Court. I'm here today as a concerned resident and housing advocate to urge you to vote no on the proposed neighborhood conservation zoning overlay. Two months ago, the Metropolitan Historic Zoning Commission reviewed this proposal. During that meeting, valid concerns were raised by a neighbor regarding the justification and impact this overlay would have. However, they were largely dismissed. However, Commissioner Smith courageously dissented, raising critical points particularly about the dangerous precedent this action would set for our city. Crucially, when this proposal was previously presented to one of the planning commissioners, Mr. Smith, they saw through the misuse of this overlay process. They. They understood how inappropriate and damaging it was, recognized it deviated from the spirit of the law, and voted accordingly. Let's be clear. This application is less about preserving genuine, publicly valuable history in Marlin Meadows and far more about establishing a precedent. A precedent that would allow any neighborhood to use the historic overlay process as a tool to circumvent established zoning and opt out of Nashville Next Planning Goals and insulate themselves from future citywide reforms aimed at increasing our housing supply. This is an attempt to weaponize a preservation tool for exclusionary purposes. Think about our valued historic districts like Belmont, Edgefield, and Germantown. They are accessible, often situated along transit routes, close to downtown, and contain commercial and cultural destinations that benefit all Nashvillians. We all experience and appreciate the architectural history preserved there, which is why we, as a city, invest public funds in their oversight. Marlin Meadows offers none of this public value. It is an isolated, out-of-the-way enclave. If you don't live there or have a specific invitation, you have no reason to ever pass through it. There is no shared public benefit. Therefore, it is obscene to ask every Nashville taxpayer to subsidize the enforcement of what essentially amounts to HOA rules for this private neighborhood. HOA rules that they could get in another way. If the residents of Marlin Meadows desire stricter aesthetic controls, then... Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Greetings. My name is Brad Brown. I'm an owner occupant within Marlin Meadows since 2019. I'm against the overlay. Please remember, there are 1,000 residents and about 230 properties in consideration. The only exhibit attached to 740 is the design guidelines. Marlin Meadows isn't even mentioned. On page 14, section 4B2 states inappropriate materials for cladding include synthetic materials such as vinyl, aluminum, EFIS, T111. The only approved cladding is brick, faux stone, stucco, lap, vertical hose, and wood, smooth fiber cement, if used in a gable, based on its typically brick color and not paint. If one drives through this neighborhood, they very quickly will get to 150 properties that violate these concerns. And there's another 30 pages of restrictions. My second point is the Historical Commission didn't follow their own posted procedures for what to expect during an overlay consideration. At their hearing, they were called out, and all but one ignored that exact call out. The councilwoman indirectly acknowledged this violation during one of the hearings by indicating that they were going to elect block captains that should have been done prior to the application. The question is, how many signatures did they get? Here today, they've indicated that they got over a dozen. Over a dozen. That math isn't mathing. If we assume each signature is from a unique, distinct house, which is very unlikely in this case, let's call it 20 signatures. Of the 230, that means about 8% of the properties are in favor. Nowhere in the world is 8% a passing grade. That also implies that 92% are against it, which is an overwhelming majority. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Council lady.
Right. Thank you. Good to come up here again. I saved some more information for later, and I'd like to share that with you now. There's actually 300 homes in this overlay. We had three dozen people at our first meeting and then dozens of people at our subsequent meetings, as well as singles of people at meetings throughout the year. And we've had one person come and objection to each and every public hearing, but it was the same person. And I'd really thank Brad for his involvement and his support. As I mentioned at the council meeting public hearing, due to his objection of the materials, that is not an issue with the conservation overlay. That would be an issue if this was a historic overlay. So for the conservation overlay, what is reviewed is new construction, demolition, and relocation of a building. And so it doesn't matter what type of roof, what type of siding, what color paint, what size windows, what types of windows. All of that is free game, and we learned that from the community throughout our extensive public meetings and longtime consideration of this, that they did not want the restriction of a historic overlay, even though the state is going to recognize this as a historically significant neighborhood. And I really appreciate that. We wanted to do a conservation overlay to have the lift be lighter. And a really big reason into this is because of the diverse makeup of this neighborhood. So similar to Haynes Heights, a mid-century neighborhood, it's an African-American neighborhood that has a mid-century conservation overlay applied to it. We are not primarily African-American. We are 24% African-American, 23% white, 13% Asian, 18% of another race, 23% of other races combined. We are 20% Latino. We are 41% male, but 59% female in this neighborhood. In this neighborhood, 21% of the 1,079 residents here are under the age of 18. 67% are of working age, and 65% are, and 12% are 65 and older. The median household income is $75,000, but that's household income. The median income of the average working-age people in this neighborhood is $26,748. That's the median income. So this is truly an effort to help protect the values of these homes and keep these people where they are and help them keep pride in this. Councilmember Allen was quoted in a recent housing report. I think it was in the Nashville Scene, but it could have been another. I've read so many lately, that said, "We really need to protect our 1940s and 50s ranch homes so that people have the opportunity to be able to afford them, so people have the opportunity to live in attic apartments, so that people have the opportunity to experience these quaint neighborhoods." And I really appreciate the state for recognizing this as a historic neighborhood, and I hope you do too. Thank you.
Thank you, council lady. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Leslie, you want to go first?
I'd like to defer to Commissioner Smith.
His name was mentioned. Commissioner Smith. Any other... Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
So I understand this already had two readings at council? Okay, well...
I was gonna say, things have been a little, like, it usually would come to planning commission before it gets to council, but...
It did. It did come.
It did. Okay, gotcha.
All good, and all we give is a recommendation. This is a political act, and just here for a recommendation. Like at the other commission, I don't think I can give my recommendation for this. I'm not sure this is the venue to talk about the his... I don't want to say dismiss the historical significance, but the criteria, the five-point criteria for the establishment of the overlay. I did not and do not think it meets that. I don't think a farm that became a neighborhood is really anything unique. I do think it is. It is a good example of mid-century architecture. There's a lot of development in that area bordering this neighborhood. I think this area would probably be redeveloped in some areas without this overlay. And to be honest, I kind of, I kind of see it as a downzoning in other terms, of which even it had the support of the residents. I, very hard for me to vote for a downzoning or more restrictions on the housing supply. A lot of the historic zones do not keep their affordability. In fact, it seems to go the opposite way. It sounds like it's going to happen, and all we do is give a recommendation, but I fear I cannot give mine.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Commissioner Clifton.
In a prior life, I was on Tennessee's greatest local legislative body, the Metro Council. And we, I was lucky to work with people in those neighborhoods, Hillsborough West End and Belmont Hillsborough. Not, and we did, in fact, pass large portions of those through the Historic Zoning Commission. And it wasn't an elitist thing. It was to preserve something worth preserving. And it wasn't because they were older than this, this set of homes. It was because people there wanted it. I don't think it, it, there's something valuable for a community, as both state and local law have set forth, that where it's appropriate and certainly where owners are generally favorable, that it's a useful thing. It adds to diversity of what a community looks like. To me, as somebody who's maybe a, something of an amateur historian, I like the visibility of that, and this meets the criteria. I don't think it would have a significant impact on affordability in this county. So I'll be voting for that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Vice Chair.
I had one question for staff and then one for the applicant. But can you remind me what, what the restrictions are in a, in a historic neighborhood conservation overlay district?
We, we have someone here from the Metro Historic Zoning Commission staff. And so I'm gonna let Melissa, if you'll just introduce yourself. Absolutely. Melissa Sajid. I'm staff with the Metro Historic Zoning Commission. So in this proposed overlay, it's a neighborhood conservation zoning overlay. It would review additions to historic houses, new construction of infill, which there are several vacant lots and non-contributing houses, outbuildings, demolition of historic homes. Now, there are certain actions that would not be reviewed. A lot of those to do with maintenance, replacing windows, roofing, and so forth. If you have any specific questions, I can help with that.
Any other commissioner any question of that?
So basically, so, so someone there can, it's not like a contextual overlay, which limits heights or anything?
So for, yeah, for infill, for a new house, say on a vacant lot, the height of that would be informed by the historic context, which in this area is one-story ranch style. You have some, some split level, one and a half story. I have seen the commission approve a modest two-story infill in another mid-century district. So it, you know, it depends on what's proposed. For an addition, that addition is informed by the scale of the house. So it would need to be compatible. It's definitely possible to build an addition, frequently a large addition.
Thank you. I had one question for the council person, councilwoman. Are the boundaries for this, is this consistent with the boundaries for the identified farm? Or like, how were the boundaries selected?
Yeah, so we worked on this with the Metro Historic Zoning Commission and with our resident historian, who's also the chair of our District 9 Preservation Committee. And we considered things that were not a part. So if you look at the southern end of this boundary, that large plot of land is a 1900s home. So we didn't want to include that in this overlay and then have it be subject to mid-century guidelines when it's a much older home. We also looked even farther down on the riverside at that large plot of land and didn't want to restrict that, you know, to the same as these that have already been divided up. So we just did it consistently with the farm, with the exception of those two outlying sized properties.
Thank you. I, I too support staff's recommendation. I mean, Neely's Bend has seen a lot of redevelopment pressure kind of coming that way. And I, I feel good about trying to preserve some of what's already there. And I think this is more, you know, more affordable housing. And, you know, if these are some characteristics that might help with preserving some of that affordability, smaller-sized homes, things like that, then, then I can support that.
Thank you. Commissioner, any other discussion? Commissioner Leslie.
Excuse, thank you, Mr. Chair. Are these on large acres of lot? I mean, are these houses, what's the size of the lots, basically?
There is some, it varies throughout the area. I mean, it's zoned RS 20, which it requires 20,000 square foot, which is about a half acre. But the lot sizes vary throughout. But generally, that size are larger.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Dundon.
I guess I also have a question for the council member. You were talking in the beginning about the little bit, a little bit about the history of how this, this proposal came to be. And I guess I had a little concern about that originally the question was about zoning, and it wasn't that the neighborhood was coming forth with a historical, with historical conservation thinking. But that became the approach that was adopted. And so I guess I have that question, just if you can just clarify.
Yeah, I may have, I may have misphrased that. The original question was, how can we help preserve this quaint neighborhood? And they said, should we rezone? Should we do an overlay? What should we do? And the first thing that we ruled out was rezoning. We did not want to downzone. And then the next thing we considered was the multiple types of overlays. So I talked with my peers and with staff and got advice on what would best fit. And the two best fits were the conservation overlay or the historic overlay. And so that's what we talked about during the initial meetings. And it was pretty clear during even the first meeting. But we went ahead and talked about both of them during all three, that the historic overlay was just going to be too restrictive, similar to some things that my constituent brought up, that those would be restricted in a historic zoning overlay. So with this overlay, it's not as restrictive, but still helps preserve the look and feel of this neighborhood, which has had, you know, a large number of country music singers throughout the decades live there. And it's, you know, just, it's a fun stroll down memory lane. If you've never been there, you should definitely take a drive.
Thank you. That, that clarifies it. Thank you very much. Okay, I think that answers my question. I think this is a, this is a little bit challenging because I think it, you know, we are, we are faced with the housing crisis, which we just talked about before this meeting in a workshop. And if, you know, this is a, this is a way for neighborhoods to, to avoid increasing density. And of course, that's one of the reasons that they're, that they do it and to preserve, preserve historical features. But it does, it does feel like this Tennessee Historical Commission has determined that this, it does represent mid-20th century housing. So I'm inclined to adopt staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? We'll need a motion, Commissioner Dundon, if you want. No pressure, but... That's a proper motion. Is there a second? There's a second? Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye. Oppose no? One no? Any other no's? Seven ayes, one no. It passes. All right. So commissioners, we are, we are, we've got two more items. I think that we can get through item 17 before we have to take a break. And then we'll be here probably about two hours. And we generally will take a break after two hours. Vice Chair and I want to make sure everybody has a restroom break. So item 17, if that's without objection. Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Bob Lehman. I'll be presenting item 17 on your agenda. This is a text amendment that changes the definition of family in the zoning code. Staff is recommending disapproval as the bill is filed, but approval with a substitute. The purpose of this text amendment is to allow persons under the age of 13 related to an adult occupant to be exempted from the maximum number of allowable unrelated persons living in a residence. This ordinance also changes the building code as well as the zoning code. However, the planning commission only makes a recommendation regarding changes to the zoning code. So to begin with, the definition of family currently in the zoning code is as follows. It, it means an individual or two or more persons related by blood, marriage, or law, or a group of two or more unrelated persons living together in a dwelling unit, not to exceed four persons in a dwelling unit with three or fewer bedrooms, and not to exceed five persons in a dwelling unit with four or more bedrooms. And such persons may include a combination of related and unrelated persons. The changes that are proposed with this text amendment would add the following language, that persons under the age of 13 related to an adult occupant by blood, marriage, or law shall be exempted from the maximum number of allowable unrelated persons. So I know that's a lot, but there's also currently in the code a couple other parts to the definition, including the definition of family means a group of not more than eight unrelated persons with disabilities. I won't read the entire part, but that's the gist of it. And a group of not more than eight unrelated persons over the age of... in section 16.24.400 of the building code. So it's not uncommon for zoning codes to define family for the purposes of establishing occupancy limits. And as you may recall, in 2023, there was a text amendment that went before the planning commission and was ultimately approved by the Metro Council that sort of adjusted that definition that I just read, the parts that were not changing. So that was, there was a lot of back and forth with that text amendment where there were amendments recommended by planning commission and several amendments at the council level that before they settled on where they were. But this proposed change was one thing that was, was not sort of agreed upon at that time. So it is now being proposed by council member Joy Kimbrough. So just as background, fair housing laws prohibit discrimination based on family status, which includes children under the age of 18. So in concept, staff supports the change to the definition to include the exemption for minors. However, we recommend changing the age from persons under the age of 13 years of age to persons under the age of 18. This will allow minors to not be counted towards the overall number of persons allowed with mixed families and families with newborn children to continue to reside in a dwelling unit without violating the definition of family. So our recommendation basically makes it consistent with fair housing laws. We've discussed that with Metro Legal. And with that, staff recommends disapproval as filed and approval with a substitute ordinance. We did talk to the council member and she is in agreement of our amendment. And so with our rules and procedures, today is the public hearing. And then we would need deferral to the May 22 planning commission meeting for the final action. But with that, that's what we will be recommending when it gets to the May 22 meeting.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate that. And commissioners, we'll open this item for public hearing. And the council member is the applicant, but they're not here. So anyone wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, no rebuttal. I don't see anyone here wishing to speak. We declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Allen, do you want to start us off?
Sure. I don't think that I have any questions or comments. But before making a motion, I'll allow any other commissioners to ask any questions or make any comments.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Allen, why don't you make a motion? We didn't know, there was no discussion.
I make a motion to move forward with staff recommendation to disapprove as submitted and approve the amendments to Title 17, the substitute.
The substitute.
It actually needs to be deferred to May 22.
Oh, that's correct. Commissioner, I'm sorry. Per our new rules, we would normally adopt, but on text amendments, we have, so it'd be a motion to defer for two meetings.
A motion to defer for two meetings.
To May 22. Yep, that's a proper motion. Any other, sorry about that, Commissioner Allen. I was getting ahead of myself as well. Any other, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of two-meeting deferral, say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it and deferred to May 22. All right, commissioners, so we've been here almost two hours. Vice Chair, generally we take a break about then. And so I would encourage, because we're going to have a really long meeting and, for the next item. And maybe, but maybe not, maybe they're into the draft, too. So, and we can't stop in between a hearing. So if we'll, if there's no objection, we'll take a quick break and then we'll be back. Okay.
We'll try to get you out of here by seven, maybe. I'm just kidding. All right. So as I stated before, we always try to remain professional. Silence your phone again. Check your phone. And we appreciate everybody coming down. So we are now on to 20 items, 28A and 28B. And council ladies, thank you for coming down. Appreciate it. And then so we'll go ahead and Maddie's going to take us through the presentation.
Thank you. Okay. This is item 28A on tonight's agenda. This item is associated with the following item 28B, which is the proposed South Nashville UDO in District 16 filed by the council member. Both items will be presented together, however, they'll be voted on separately. This is a request to rezone various properties from various single-family, one and two-family, and multifamily zoning districts to RM20 ANS and RM40 ANS. Properties in red are identified, identified in red are proposed to be rezoned to RM20 ANS and gray is proposed to be RM40 ANS. Staff's recommendation is to disapprove and approve a substitute. The substitute would include the properties identified in blue above and are recommended to be rezoned to RM40 ANS. As a note, there are two parcels that were inadvertently excluded from staff's map. The sites are mid-block along Burbank and Alberta, and they will be included in an updated map should the planning commission approve staff's recommendation. The application consists of various parcels totaling 620.23 acres located within District 16, south of I-440 and south of Thompson Lane on both sides of Nolansville Pike. This rezone is associated with a proposed urban design overlay district, which proposes to apply alternative development standards that would guide any new development to be compatible with the surrounding areas. Staff wanted to provide context on this request and the ongoing housing and infrastructure study as this is being conducted concurrently. As we understand it, the purpose of this rezoning and urban design overlay is to allow for additional housing opportunity. Staff is in alignment with this goal of adding more housing as the Housing and Infrastructure Study expects the housing availability in current zoning capacity to be short over the next 10 years. The draft Housing and Infrastructure Recommendations lay out a four-part test for changes to the zoning code or zoning map, which staff made an effort to be consistent with in evaluating this rezone as staff incorporated feedback from the infrastructure reviewing agencies in this review to provide visibility to issues around growth management. The guidance is reflected in the staff report. With that, Nashville Next provides a growth and preservation map, which identifies centers and corridors where additional density may be appropriate, coupled with investments in infrastructure. The darker colors of orange and tan represent centers and transition areas, while the lighter beige is neighborhood. As a reminder, Nashville Next was a community-driven plan that outlined many goals and objectives, including creating walkable places and managing demand for new housing, encouraging a mix of housing types along corridors, and encourage properly scaled housing types in transitional areas. Nolansville Pike is identified on this map as an immediate need for infrastructure investments as a high-capacity all-access transit corridor. This is the Community Character Manual map for T4, which is the urban transect. This chart identifies the elements, the intent, and policies within. Within each transect, there are elements of neighborhood centers and corridors. Each transect supports all housing types across the elements, while each policy supports various densities. Here's a better view of the policies within the proposed boundary. They will be discussed further in the next slide, but they identify the varying policies included in this request of suburban neighborhood maintenance, urban neighborhood maintenance, urban neighborhood evolving, and urban neighborhood center. These excerpts are taken from our Community Character Manual, and they identify the generally supported zoning designation for each policy. The proposed boundary area includes the T3 and T4 transacts, mainly within neighborhood maintenance policies. Most of the parcels where staff is supporting are within the T4NM policy. Except for a few parcels, staff is proposing to remove the T3NM area from our recommendation. As you can see, RM20 is not a listed zoning designation within this policy. Staff would note that the RM40 ANS exceeds the density indicated by the Community Character Manual as being supported in the T4NM policy and would recommend to the planning commission that Nashville Next be evaluated in that regard with the Housing and Infrastructure Study recommendations. Improved infrastructure is necessary for supporting higher densities, and Nashville Next addresses this objective within its policy language. Staff worked with Endo and Water Staff and analyzed the existing infrastructure throughout the rezone area and against the Nashville Next policy. With guidance from council to evaluate the relationship of zoning, land use, and infrastructure in the Housing and Infrastructure Study, the department attempted to provide a better picture of a systems-level improvement needed to support growth, such as water capacity, sewer capacity, stormwater, sidewalks, and street alley network. This is also consistent with our review of zoning cases generally. In evaluation, it was concluded that generally water capacity in this area is strong, but stormwater and sidewalk networks are deeply inconsistent and insufficient in some areas. As such, staff identified general parameters for parcels included in staff's proposed modified map, and those parameters are: sites within the transition area as shown on the growth and preservation map in Nashville Next; sites within approximately a quarter mile to Nolansville Pike, if it's also within the UZO, which is the urban zoning overlay, and existing sidewalks or alleys are present. And then also sites within approximately an eighth of a mile to Nolansville Pike if within the UZO and no sidewalks or unbuilt alleys are present. While the proposed site area mainly consists of local roads, some improved alleys, and arterial boulevards, Nolansville Pike specifically is identified as a high-capacity all-access transit corridor and provides Wego bus transit services and retail uses that are important to the surrounding neighborhoods, so more density within a quarter-mile walk to that corridor aligns with Nashville Next and is appropriate. This image identifies an area included in staff's recommended areas. This image shows improved sidewalks and alley access sufficient for supporting higher density. And this image identifies an area included in the proposed boundary area where staff recommends removing. This area is situated further from the corridor with no alleys and no sidewalks to provide connection to the corridor. As such, staff recommends a modified rezoning map of approximately 216 acres, identifying areas close to Nolansville Pike as more suitable for the change in zoning as these areas are in a transition area, which support the goals of creating high-level connectivity through more walkable corridors, supporting high-capacity transit, and mostly featuring improved alleys and some sidewalks, which are already in place, as opposed to the areas proposed for removal by staff. Higher intensity is appropriate when near corridors as they typically provide amenities that provide for the residents, such as transit and walkability to consumer services. Proximity to Nolansville Pike was a crucial factor when evaluating this proposal. And the staff recommended areas are also within the urban zoning overlay, which generally represents older, more urban areas that were built with alleys in some instances. This is item 28B on tonight's agenda, and this item is associated with the previous rezone. This is a request to apply an urban design overlay district to the same boundary area as the rezone. Staff's recommendation is to disapprove as submitted and approve a substitute with conditions if the associated case is approved and disapprove without all conditions. If the associated case is not approved, staff also recommends disapproval. As with the rezoning, here is the four-part test from the Housing and Infrastructure Study, which staff used in an effort to be consistent with in evaluating this rezone. The purpose of an urban design overlay is to allow for the application and implementation of special design standards with the intent of achieving a sense of place by fostering a scale of form and development as design-based zoning. The boundary area of the UDO encompasses predominantly residential uses, and the standards of the UDO would apply to residential properties when the property is redeveloped or a vacant site is developed. Structures that existed prior to this UDO and new additions to an existing structure are exempt from the UDO standards and would be required to follow base zoning. Non-residential and mixed-use structures are exempt from the requirements of the UDO. And owner-occupied and not-owner-occupied short-term rentals are prohibited throughout the entire UDO area with the proposed new base zoning. The bill as filed would adopt the South Nashville Urban Design Overlay to apply standards to various properties within District 16, which are also included in the associated rezone case. Staff recommends a modified UDO boundary of approximately 216 acres, eliminating such parcels that we find do not meet the policy and are without improved infrastructure and further away from transit, consistent with the recommended base zoning map. Staff recommends the associated rezoning case because it is coupled with the UDO as the UDO applies design guidelines for future projects in keeping with the characteristics of the surrounding area. The South Nashville UDO is proposed to enable more housing within the area while providing guidance for such new development to ensure appropriate design is maintained between the new growth and the existing character of the area. The goal of the UDO is to ensure context-appropriate design is applied to future housing within the area, and the UDO provides standards as it relates to bulk regulations, such as gross floor area, street setbacks, and height. It provides standards for materials and facade treatments, massing, landscape, and access. In circumstances where the UDO is silent, the base zoning and overlays would then apply. Here are the land use policies that we talked about with the rezoning again. Staff is recommending a few conditions if approved that would adjust the impervious surface ratio for multifamily from 0.7 to 0.65, and suggests or recommends add an impervious surface ratio for two-family of 0.5. This recommendation is an effort to be more in keeping with the existing character of the area and provide additional opportunities to address stormwater issues. Stormwater and traffic infrastructure requirements will be evaluated with each final site plan to determine compliance with metro requirements. As with the rezoning, staff recommends the area in blue for the reasons outlined with the rezoning application. Staff recommends to disapprove as submitted and approve a substitute with conditions if the associated case is approved and disapprove without all conditions if the associated case is not approved. Then staff recommends disapproval. Thank you.
Thank you, Maddie, and commissioners. We'll open this item for public hearing. And but before we do that, what is the procedure? Lisa, what is the, where is the bill at council? What are, what if, what are our options? Can we defer? Or can you give us the update so the commissioners know procedurally where the bill is?
Certainly. So the bill has been introduced and had a first reading at council, and it is tracking for public hearing at the next council meeting on May 6. There is a council rule that indicates that when something is introduced, it's essentially referred to planning. And the second reading... and the second reading cannot happen until one of two things occur. First, the Planning Commission has made a recommendation, or 30 days have passed. In this case, it's actually pretty rare, but between introduction, because that was very early in April, and the public hearing in May, more than 30 days have passed. And so regardless of if you all make a recommendation tonight or not, that public hearing can continue forward without a recommendation. So we encourage you all to make a recommendation tonight.
So if we deferred it, then it would administratively be approved?
If you defer it, it would be able to continue through the public hearing and would be considered for any vote counts as an approval recommendation.
Okay. All right. This, let me be really clear. We love everybody to come down here, okay? We want your input. We're all volunteers like you on the commission. And so I understand there's a lot of tension and, but everybody's going to be able to speak unless we have outcries. Then we'll just stop the meeting, clear the room, and then we'll proceed without you. So I would suggest that everybody be professional, and we appreciate that. Both sides are going to get the time, okay?
But Chairman, I think bottom line, our recommendation is that you proceed with a vote this evening. Normally, in a zoning case, you'll ask us what, you know, what are our options? And so, but we wanted to make sure that everybody sort of understood the lay of the land procedurally. So thank you.
Okay. So, Council Lady, do you have a question? We haven't opened the public hearing yet, and you're going to be the first one to speak. Is there a question? Yeah, okay. So Commissioners, we're going to open the public hearing, and Council Lady, you're the applicant.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Thank you for your time and all the work that you do. And I appreciate the opportunity to come before you today to talk about my proposal to change the zoning in my district and why I believe it's the right thing to do. But before I begin, I do want to take a moment to acknowledge the Planning Department. I know how much meaningful work is happening right now across the city, from the Housing and Infrastructure Study to the East Bank. I'm very grateful for your support of the RM40 portion of my proposal, and I can appreciate your infrastructure concerns about the RM20 area. But in the interest of my district and the long-rooted neighborhoods that exist, I need to use the best tools available today to manage the change that is already coming to my district and keep in alignment with the goals set out by Nashville Next. My district is changing fast. Since I was elected, 75 parcels have been rezoned already, and there are another 16 rezonings currently active. I get asked to rezon all the time, which is a good thing, but it's also an acknowledgement that we, as a city, are not keeping up with the needs of our community. So that's why I spent the last year and a half learning about zoning and land use and the zoning decisions of the past that we are living with today. And I've spent the last six months engaging my district on the housing and zoning issues that everyone is familiar with. Zoning is not a technical issue, it's a personal issue. Housing relates to so many facets of a person's life, and I've truly enjoyed hearing from and learning from my constituents, including many who I had never spoken before or had any dealings with before. It's hard to imagine changing the zoning of an entire neighborhood, but the neighborhood zoning has already changed many times in the past 100 years. Most recently in 2013, 2003, excuse me, when the entire district was downzoned from R zoning to RS zoning. Over 4,000 parcels were downzoned then, and the Planning Department's analysis was nothing more than a few lines describing that it wasn't against policy to downzone residential areas. And now, over 20 years later, my district hasn't grown at all in population, even during one of Nashville's most intense growth periods. But the district continues to change, and I continue to be approached by people interested in building more housing. And I continue to support these requests because the city needs housing, and the city's community plan is to build housing in urban neighborhoods near centers and corridors. So I wanted to do a more comprehensive approach and rezon the entire district to basically undo the 2003 rezone, and even more, to right-size the zoning, but for the Nashville of today. I was told it was an ambitious plan to rezon the entire district, including the commercial areas and the corridors, and I was advised to scale things back, which I did. So I focused on urban neighborhoods that have the infrastructure and proximity that's the things that we say we want to build near housing. This plan isn't radical. It borrows from existing zoning codes that have already been adopted elsewhere in the city, codes that are proven, tested, and aligned with Nashville Next. The goal is simple: to guide growth towards what these neighborhoods were always meant to be: walkable, transit-oriented, working-class communities. Transit-oriented isn't a new concept for Nashville. In fact, many of the streets in this rezone, Glen Rose, Peachtree, Ludi, Thompson Lane, Radnor, all had streetcar stops at the end of them. So these neighborhoods literally started out as transit-oriented development. We know what single-family zoning does to our urban streetcar neighborhoods in Nashville over time as development comes. One modest house gets torn down and is replaced with one or two larger homes. And that's not appropriate for this amenity-rich urban neighborhood with the history it has. But that's the trajectory we're on with our current zoning. So I put together a plan that gives people options that's upfront with the zoning potential instead of waiting for a developer to ask me for it, that allows housing broadly and sets standards for development that everybody is aware of, so it isn't just up to me or the next council member. Zoning takes up an inordinate amount of a member's time and attention, as it does plannings, time that could be spent on much more important issues. The standards are from already-adopted plans, like the Wedgewood-Houston-Chestnut Hills UZO and the 31st and Long UZO. What I've tried to do here is allow and incentivize middle-scale housing for nurses, firefighters, teachers, immigrants, first-time homebuyers, all of these people. The UZO encourages middle-class housing by allowing more units on a lot, decreasing the building height, and limiting the square footage of multifamily units. What Nashville Next says this neighborhood needs is more housing, and I'm trying to assure that we not only get more housing, but we don't also just get more large housing, and that we're offering a variety of housing types in the neighborhood, the variety which traditionally has been found in these neighborhoods, but that are illegal, basically, to build today. And Planning agrees with the RM40 area of this proposal. They released a study recently, the Middle-Scale Housing Policy Review, which analyzed the zoning code and found that RM40 is the district most likely to result in middle-scale housing. The study was started in 2023 by a third party and was due in March of '24, but I couldn't get a hold of it until recently in 2025. I asked for it a few times, but I was unsuccessful in getting it a few weeks ago. And I'm not really sure if the study is yet on the website, but I do hope that it is made available because it has, it's an excellent study. In addition to identifying RM40 as the zoning district that will bring middle-scale housing, the Middle-Scale Study also provided recommendations on how to change bulk standards within the current code to allow middle-scale housing. The Housing and Infrastructure Study will also make recommendations to that end, and that is what Planning says they'll release in June. I do want to emphasize that I tried to work, timed this all with the Housing and Infrastructure Study and worked with Planning. I submitted the proposal in January, and at their request, I held off until the end of March, which was when I was told they might have drafts of the bulk standards. But they couldn't make that timeline, and I felt like I couldn't wait while time keeps passing and my district keeps getting rezoned property by property. But if in June Planning releases those new bulk standards for RM20 and RM40 that encourage context-sensitive, middle-context-sensitive, middle-scale housing, like they're saying that it will, I'll remove my UZO. I don't see myself in this proposal as working at odds with Planning. I think we are working in tandem towards a common goal, which is to get more housing that we need in Nashville. But as much as we need housing, we know it won't get built overnight. So my proposal outlines the goals for the next few decades. A wise man once said, "Zoning isn't something you do for now, but what you do for the future." And we needed this a long time ago. Housing and zoning reform is not a new issue in Nashville. Nashville Next specifically describes zoning reform like this as being an immediate need, and that was 10 years ago. So when I started my community conversation about this policy, I approached it with the background that Nashville Next, the largest and most equitable community engagement process ever conducted in this city, determined land use goals and recommendations for the city we all want. And the community said they wanted walkability and affordability, and that's what I oriented the zoning reform around. In order to get different and more types of units in walking proximity to destinations, we needed to change the zoning as was described in Nashville Next. As I mentioned at the beginning, I started this about a year and a half ago, researching and learning what can be done to truly address our housing crisis. I had a community meeting last November to talk about what I thought we needed to do in the district and why, and why now. It was a good meeting, but I saw the same core group of people there, people who tend to show up at all these meetings and whose voices, I feel, are kind of overrepresented in the discussions. So I knew I needed to broaden that conversation and bring in more voices, and I had to figure out a way to reach all those people who don't get information on what we consider the normal channels. They don't do social media. They don't look at Metro calendars. They don't get my newsletter or go to Neighborhood Association meetings. And I realized then that the best way to do that was to submit my proposal and get broad notice sent out to the community as a whole, and it worked. I heard from people all over my district, people I had never spoken to or interacted with. People had questions. They expressed concerns. They told me what they wanted to do in the past and what they hoped they wanted to do in the future. They talked about growing up here and their great love for the city and their sadness for what they feel we've lost. It was a lot, and it was wonderful. And those conversations have continued. People call, they email. I had a community meeting last week with 130 attendees, a meeting yesterday with a small group of five, and another community meeting is scheduled for next week. Unfortunately, some assumptions were made about this proposal, and without any effort to contact me to find out if those assumptions were actually factual about what this does and doesn't do, the assumptions were put on social media and presented as fact, and that caused a lot of confusion, confusion that's kind of been fanned over the past few weeks. That conclusion for some, that confusion is being cited now from some as a reason that this should be stopped. But that's a tactic, and it's dishonest, and I think that it shouldn't be rewarded. I believe the approach I'm taking is the most democratic and equitable approach I could take because I've done true community engagement. The questions I've gotten during this engagement have covered everything, from housing, infrastructure, everything. People talked about traffic, and parking, and flooding, and taxes, and construction, and schools, and so on. I know there's challenges with Nolansville Pike and flooding, and that people drive fast in our neighborhoods, and that we all want to feel safe walking and have that infrastructure available. And I know that the city is slow to respond and build things while developers are out there building things in seconds. And I know the reality is developers build sidewalks way faster and make improvements way faster than we do as a city. And that is very unfortunate, but that's not really what this is about. Right now in our neighborhoods, a modest house can be torn down and replaced with one large house, and no improvements have to be made. This UZO limits the size of multifamily housing, reducing the overall infrastructure impact in terms of water and electricity usage. Additionally, the UZO has an ISR of .7 for multifamily, which is the same as many single-family districts. So you can't put more pavement or more building down than you can already do today. Planning in this recommendation is suggesting to lower that ISR, but that would lower it beneath most single-family districts. So I'd like to push back on that a little bit, and I hope that you'll approve the UZO as is instead of accepting that substitute. And finally, multifamily is subject to stormwater regulations, unlike single-family, and has to retain water on site. So what I'm trying to say here is that not only is the overall footprint the same as what's currently allowed under single-family, but new family development would actually have to put in stormwater infrastructure in place, unlike single-family. As for the sidewalks, the Choose How You Move Plan contains the largest sidewalk construction project maybe in our history. It will create 86 miles of sidewalks in 15 years countywide, and that's great. But if you average that out, that's just 2.5 miles of sidewalk in each district over 15 years. If we wait for every urban neighborhood to get adequate sidewalks in order to allow more housing, we will never get more housing. So I do hope that's not a sticking point. I think we all know that Nolansville Pike is less than ideal. The traffic is a problem. But generally, that's not traffic generated from our neighborhoods. That's traffic being funneled from one side of the city to the other. The Safe Streets and Roads for all grant we received is to improve safety and build sidewalks on Nolansville Pike, so that's already in progress. And Nolansville and Thompson Lane are also expecting improvements under Choose How You Move. Thompson Lane is one of those rare cross-county routes that will have excellent WGO coverage. And Nolansville Pike is set to get a super bus stop near Coleman Park that's similar to the new stop in Green Hills. But the traffic problems will likely remain unchanged by this rezoning as one lot develops at a time. Traffic goes gradually over time and requires management. Infrastructure needs to adapt to community needs over time, and Nashville currently falls short on delivering that, no doubt. But essentially, with infrastructure, even in the best scenario, waiting for perfection means waiting forever. Now, Planning did a wonderful job, the Planning staff did a wonderful job in clarifying some of the confusion about the UZO. But just to reiterate, existing homes don't need a permit when they add an addition or renovation. The UZO only applies to new units, so you don't need a UZO if you're doing something to your existing house. But you do need a UZO permit if you build new or multiple units. If you just build a new single-family unit, the 1,600-square-foot gross-floor area limit does not apply. Gross-floor area limits only apply if you build two or more units. So this plan gives options to people. They can still do what they want with an existing home, and they can build a single-family home to their liking. They can also build more units if they comply with the contextual standards. This allows long-term homeowners to add a small house for an adult child or a grandparent or to make additional rental income. This allows longtime homeowners to stay in the neighborhood if they downsize and say they don't want to deal with a large yard or maintenance. They could also split their lot and sell the part of their lot they don't want to maintain, and that can help them afford to live in the increasingly expensive Nashville. And for renters, this plan makes every homeowner a potential housing partner, providing and allows for creative housing situations, which are very, very limited right now. And it also allows for different types of rental units. Now, in my final act, because I'm sure you're getting tired of hearing me speak, I'd like to address Planning's substitute. I am very grateful that Planning sees that RM40 is appropriate for many of these properties, but I'd like to ask the Commission to consider why RM20 is also appropriate. In their report, Planning wrote, "Overall, the proposed RM20 ANS zoning is generally not supported in Nashville Next within the proposed areas, and given the lack of proximity to Nolansville Pike, staff found that these areas are not yet ripe for significant upzone. RM20 SNS is generally not recommended as a zoning designation within the T3 Neighborhood Maintenance Policy. Capital investments in the area could ripen the city's ability to support additional growth there." So I'd like to make my case for RM20. Largely, these areas that I have identified are similar to the RM40 areas. They have proximity to amenities, and they are gridded streets, which is different than most T3 suburban policy throughout Nashville. These are not typical suburban areas, and I strategically picked the rezoning boundary based on infrastructure. They do lack curb and gutters and sidewalks similar to many Nashville neighborhoods, but this will get improved as development is built. But these gridded neighborhoods are in walking distance to services and public amenities like transit, and parks, and schools, and community centers, and small neighborhood grocery stores. I know that Planning is saying that a quarter-mile is a good walking distance to transit, and I agree that having most housing within a quarter-mile of transit is a goal for our transit system. But a quarter mile is maybe two blocks, and that would mean we would never get the neighborhood density that actually supports a transit system. We already have folks in the 16th that walk much farther to our bus stops on Nolansville and Thompson Lane, and that's not in the context of our neighborhood to apply a quarter-mile walk shed for transit access. So I hope the Commission can understand the importance of this issue and the many challenges surrounding rezoning, and recognize that this is a true community-driven plan for guiding growth in the coming decades. I'd like to request that the Commission approve my plan as presented, but if the Commission recommends approval of the Planning substitute, then I will carry the approved recommendation to Council. Thank you all so very much for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Council Lady, appreciate it. All right. So is there anyone wishing to speak in support? Come on up. Y'all will line up.
I'll go first, if that's okay. Hello.
My name is Mackenzie Beaver, and I'm a homeowner in Woodbine. I recognize that I'm in the minority. While my side is not quite as passionate or present as those opposed, I have personally talked to at least 10 neighbors who are supportive of change. So while I am in the minority, I do not stand alone. I'd like to take a moment to explain why we need change. In Woodbine, we have a large number of vacant homes, which are often occupied by squatters. We have found needles in the streets, and we have at times felt unsafe. I believe zoning change will encourage developments of these lots and bring other positive changes as more residents can support neighborhoods beyond used car lots and sketchy stores that currently line Nolansville Road. Lastly, I'd like to say that I appreciate the elements of the urban design overlay, like building height restrictions, which are proposed to help us keep the existing character of the neighborhood. However, one thing I think both sides agree to is that community members would like more say in the zoning and design proposals. And there has been a lot of conflicting information shared, which has made the plan somewhat challenging to evaluate. Woodbine consists of small homes on relatively large lots, which is something that cannot be sustained long term in a city like Nashville. I would rather have more input into how our neighborhood evolves rather than fight it and regret the inevitable changes that will eventually come regardless or be left out of Nashville's growth altogether. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Eric Green, and I live at Andrea Drive in the 16th District. I've been living there for over 20 years, and I've also taught at Metro Public Schools for that same amount of time. The economic and ethnic diversity in my neighborhood is what drew me to buy a house there and to stay there. I'm concerned about the fact that developers are buying lots, knocking down homes and building huge houses that aren't affordable to teachers like me and other working people. There's a house built around the corner from us that costs four times what most of the other houses in our neighborhood sell for. We need to have a plan that lets developers make a return on their investment without pricing teachers out of the neighborhood. I would prefer to see duplexes, condos, and other affordable options being built. I work with teachers who have to double up and triple up just to afford to live where they live now. And the same, I'm sure, is true for servers, bartenders, and other people who make Nashville run. So building a duplex doesn't mean necessarily more traffic. It just means these folks can't stay here to raise their family. Finally, I'd like the opportunity to build on my own property to provide a safe quality of life for my aging parents, and I would like others in the neighborhood to have the same opportunity. So I urge you to support the proposed bill for the 16th District. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Elliot Perry. I live in District 21. Like the council member from District 20 said, what happens in one district really impacts what happens elsewhere in our city. I've moved into Nashville in 2018. I've been building houses in Nashville since 2020. Affordable housing is something I drive my council member nuts about all the time. I'm here to encourage you to support this density with the overlay. If you believe in affordable housing, and we need it, and it is a crisis, this kind of planning is what we need in our city. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Barry Ballinger. I teach architecture at Belmont University. And I support this rezone for a lot of reasons, but I'm going to cover four of them here. One of them is, as an architect, I understand the connection between walkability and transitability, land use, and quality of life. And I don't live in this neighborhood. I rent a townhouse in District 27. However, if the sort of rezone, the kind of modest density that the council member is proposing, were in more areas of Nashville, it would greatly increase the quality of life in every part of Nashville. There'd be fewer people driving on the roads, congesting our street network that's not made for the number of people who live here, and less dangerous, fewer pedestrian deaths, fewer car accidents, and then just better public space. The amount of space that we use for moving and storing cars is outrageous in this city. Number two, the best way to increase diversity and sense of belonging in a neighborhood is to allow a range of housing types. And this proposal will promote incremental growth that allows the neighborhood to grow slowly over time and allows more people to be involved in that growth versus radical rezones that just, radical upzones that you rely on developers to develop everything. So the individual landowners, like the gentleman just said, would be able to become their own developers. The third reason I support this rezone, and that I'm here to support this rezone, is because the people who would most benefit from this rezone in this neighborhood, they're not here right now. They don't have a voice. And thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you so much for your time. I do not envy you. I have been in real estate for 12 years here in Nashville, Tennessee. And the one thing that I have learned as both a Realtor and a developer is we cannot create affordable housing without density, or we're going to be robbing from somebody. We can't make land cheaper. We cannot take the value away from people. And we're certainly not getting cheaper construction costs. Density is our only path to affordable housing in Nashville. I think this district is specifically opportune for additional density. And while I have also been baffled at what some developers build in neighborhoods and completely hear and understand everybody's concerns with not wanting certain types of housing and aesthetic, all of that can be accomplished with a UDO, with design guidelines. But the density piece is critical to Nashville. We're right off of the interstate. You're right by the fairgrounds where tons of more and more improvements are being made and infrastructure is put in place. And if we want affordable housing, density is the only way to do it. Simply put, a developer cannot pay high prices and build multiple houses unless we get grants from the city, and free money doesn't come from nowhere. Density is our only path forward. I completely hear our neighbors who have concerns about the aesthetics and the changes in the neighborhood. But I would say uniquely, this neighborhood, these neighborhoods uniquely are situated in a position where density is just, it's ripe for density. So we can bring in more neighbors who can afford it, who are like me and have young kids or teachers and firemen and all that. Thank you for your time. Bless you.
Thank you. Oh, sir, we, did you state your name?
Ronald Booth.
Here, do it in the microphone. Ronnie Booth. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Nick Hines. I live in Glencliff. There's many benefits to pushing this plan forward. I want to focus on the walkability aspect of it. The area has so much potential for walkability. There are so many good little amenities right now. The new playground at Coleman Park is amazing. Dag Thai, the restaurant, is amazing. There are bits of restaurants and retail that are really good for walkability. But our, Nolansville is also totally crowded with car dealerships that people constantly complain about on the Facebook group. There's all these tire shops, there's auto repair shops that specifically pop up in places that are not walkable because you're not going to need to walk to a car repair place. So if we allow denser housing, then we can have businesses that are willing to invest and make retail and restaurants. Walkability only comes with denser housing, as Ronnie just talked about. In order to justify the investment, we have to have lots of people nearby. We also, as a city overwhelmingly voted yes to the Choose How You Move initiative back in November, which is focused on transit, walkability, sidewalks. We have to have people able to live near those corridors in order to use the improved transit, to use the sidewalks. If we pour all this money into increasing our buses and increasing the bus stops, but nobody is within walking distance of those bus stops, the money is kind of gone to waste. So in order to make a good investment out of that and to improve the quality of life for people who want to go to nice retail places and take their family to nice family-friendly restaurants, we need to increase the density and allow more housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Anton Christensen Galena. I'm the vice chair of the Housing Trust Fund Commission. I sat right there on Tuesday. And so we're getting hit really hard by acquisition costs. Like, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but like, we need density to build affordable housing. And there's so few lots where we can build multifamily that you have bidding wars, which raise the cost, which we as a city ultimately end up paying in grants. So I just urge you to maximize density as much as possible so we can build units. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Enrique Diaz. Vivo en el área de Woodbine.
Good afternoon. My name is Enrique Diaz. I live in the area of Woodline.
Quiero aprovechar la oportunidad para ver qué posibilidad hay de que yo pueda construir en donde vivo mi propiedad porque...
I would like to take this opportunity to see all the possibilities that I can develop in my land and my property.
Construir en la parte de atrás y después renovarla de enfrente.
Be able to construct the front area and then renovate the back.
Es todo.
And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, sir. Appreciate it. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. My name is Brittany Taber. I am a young professional, a newlywed, and a renter in the Edge Hill neighborhood. I'm going to keep this really short because public speaking makes me really nervous. And I'd just like to say this policy keeps options open for current property owners. But it also gives hope to aspiring property owners like me. Hang on, I'm sorry. I really want to raise my family in Nashville. And without affordable housing, I can't do that. So I would just really appreciate if you could upzone places where it makes sense near transit and near sidewalks and make them the kinds of neighborhood that I dream of living in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You did great. Welcome.
Thank you all, and good evening. My name is Nick Cavan. I'm a renter of 10 years in the Nashville area, currently in Belmont Hillsborough, and a member of the NOAA Affordable Housing Task Force. And I'm here to speak strongly in support of this proposal. As a young professional and lifelong middle Tennessean, I dream, like Brittany, of owning a home in a walkable neighborhood here in town, surrounded by the community that I've built here. But that dream feels increasingly out of reach, not because people don't want to live here. In fact, a lot of people want to live here, but because our zoning laws haven't kept pace with what we as a city need and we as a community need. This middle-income housing we're talking about, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, used to be common in Nashville, but today they're largely illegal to build, as you all know. The Urban Institute just put out a study that showed that 90% of Nashville is zoned exclusively for single or two-family homes. When we have great areas like this, which could be thriving communities full of multifamily middle-income housing, but right now, we're not allowing folks to build those kind of homes. So through my work with NOAA, I've learned about the historical origins of NOAA, excuse me, the historical origins of zoning and how that has had a direct impact on segregation and both racial and economic in our city. And that goes back to the original source of zoning. And I encourage you to read the infrastructure study. They have some great quotes about people linking zoning and racial segregation blatantly. You'll hear from a lot of folks tonight who say they support affordable housing, and I'm sure they do, but they don't support this proposal. And this is such a common refrain. Everyone supports it, but not this specific iteration of it. But we must do something as a city. And this, along the transit corridors, is an excellent example of how we can become the city that is more just, that is more equitable, and is for everyone who wants to live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Tal Hasin. I've lived in Nashville for about 25 years. Grew up here, went to high school here. In these neighborhoods, literally these maps, I can see my house on the actual print. More importantly than how long I've lived here, I'm planning on living here for another 40 years. Knock on wood. Live that long. So I see this as something that's going to impact my life probably pretty, more substantially than most things that happen. I'll give you a real story. About a year ago, I tried to build a small unit on my lot for aging parents. About a month ago, one of those parents had three stents put into their heart. And I was told I can't do that in this city, even though I am quite literally, I don't know, maybe three and a half miles from downtown. I get Lime scooters down the street from downtown. But somehow, it's illegal for me to put up a small unit where I can have, you know, older parents who can live with me with some dignity as opposed to putting them in anywhere else in the city, particularly outside the neighborhoods. So honestly, my initial thought was actually to approve as-is the proposed changes with the UDO. I'm kind of surprised that it's actually adjusted. You know, at this point, I think it's worth taking everything. It's kind of beating a dead horse to talk about the affordable housing issue and the overall density problems or lack thereof within Nashville, also the growth that's happened in the city overall. But I hope you support this. I think there's a lot of people who are about to spend a significant part of their life in Nashville. And this is something that either determines that, can they actually, one, do it in Nashville? And, two, what is the quality of that life going to be if they're able to even do it? Anyways, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Stephen Emery. I'm a developer in this neighborhood. I've built actually a few projects in the area that I'm guessing a lot of neighbors would be familiar with. We built the three single-family homes on Antioch Pike, right next to Wright Middle School. They're all single-family zoning, individual lots. And then I've built HPRs in the neighborhood, you know, tear down a house, build two, as well as a 30-unit townhouse project on Witsit, which I think is the most affordable project in our neighborhood right now with price points at $399. And the reason I bring that up is I think it's really important to think about, from a developer's perspective, what you can accomplish on any of these lots in particular. So right now, with you guys potentially supporting RM40 zoning, I know it's scaring a lot of constituents that are here. They're thinking that it's going to be all apartment buildings that'll just come up and sprout up. But the truth is, anything that's been built recently, within the last decade, anything that's been remodeled recently, which comprises a lot of them, a lot of the homeowners that wouldn't want to see this rezoning go through, are unlikely to build on any of these lots. And so you guys are potentially going to support rezoning a large swath of area. But what I would really like to point out is, this is giving an opportunity for those marginal homes that can get rezoned, or these lots, like the gentleman just said, where he can build behind his house and add density. We're adding the type of housing that works on any individual parcel and creates more opportunity for people to buy, rent, and live in the neighborhood. Really empathize with the people that are concerned, that can't afford, that are renting, that want to live there, that, you know, just can't buy a unit that works. And I think that the main part of this UDO, where we remove minimum lot sizes and encourage smaller units to be built, I think that's the best part of this rezoning plan. So I would just encourage you guys to support rezoning the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Mi nombre es Alfredo Garcia.
Mi nombre es Alfredo Garcia.
Vivo entre la Nolansville y Thompson Lane.
And I live between Nolansville and Thompson Lane.
Hace tiempo contacté a Jenny. A Jenny, le dije que si me podía ayudar a hacer un cambio del suelo de mi propiedad.
Sometime ago, I contacted Jenny in order to ask her if I could make a change on the grounds of my property.
Ella me dijo que iba a haber un cambio, que esperar este cambio, y yo vengo a apoyar este momento.
And she said that there was going to be a change for me to wait for said change. So I have been waiting for this moment.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Gracias. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Neil Cornetik. I live in Wedgewood, Houston. I kind of wanted to give you that perspective. My house is .6 miles away from our future all-access corridor. It's a bit further than what you all are discussing today. Part of that doesn't really include sidewalks. You know, that all-access corridor is scheduled to maybe start work in about a decade. Maybe my daughter will finish high school by the time it's done. I'm sure. The UDO that we're in was passed about four years ago. And four years is a very long time. In that time, there are, on our couple of blocks, there's only been a couple of triplexes. We're going to see our first quadplex finish. It isn't this massive amount of homes that have been unleashed. It is a small incremental step towards building more homes in Nashville. And as the chair said, some of us are here for a draft party. And waiting does sound great on paper, but as a Jets fan, waiting is not fun. It's been a long time. But that's just sports. But that's just sports. And like many people are here to talk about, people's lives matter. And waiting for housing and for prices to be cheaper or have homes to live in, they need that, and they shouldn't have to wait. So I urge you all to support this, thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Hi again commissioners, my name is Mannan, and can we just announce like the Titans draft pick in here, just in case when it comes up? Uh, I rent in District Three and I'm sad my representative is not here, um, I rely on public transit to get around Nashville. I stand in strong support of this rezoning. For transit users like me, living within a reasonable walk of a bus stop is crucial. I disagree with the quarter-mile walk-to-transit standard, um, that's only about two blocks and I walk much further than that all the time. And to truly make transit work, we need zoning that supports density further out. This is an urban neighborhood with existing transit access, but current act, but current zoning holds it back, creating a car-dependent pattern that undermines our transit system. This rezoning by allowing, allowing more urban appropriate density makes it possible for more people to live within a comfortable walk-to-transit. It's not just about more homes, it's about enabling diverse housing types. The current zoning will lead to negative outcomes when properties redevelop, building expensive homes that don't support transit and worsen our urban form. This provo- proposal offers a better path. Strategically increasing density in transit-rich areas extending beyond just two blocks maximizes our transit investments and benefits. It supports local businesses and provides the tax revenue needed for infrastructure that we want, like sidewalks. Delaying this perpetuates a system that disadvantages transit riders and hinders accessible housing. As someone who relies on transit, I urge you to approve this proposal, thanks.
Thank you, welcome.
Yes, my name is Tony Tucker, I, um, own property in District Sixteen. I'll be short and s- sh- short and sweet, I am in favor of the, um, proposal. I feel like it will increase the housing stock, um, allow for forced builders or home builders or developers to, um, build more, more, um, affordable housing with those restrictions. It also, um, it, it will increase the, the tax base, which will, in due time, allow for more investment, um, in the area. And also it gives property owners the option to, if they want to possibly build a s- smaller unit on their, their, um, par- property to rent it out, it, it allows them to be able to make, make additional income from that. So, um, yeah, that's all I have to say, and I'm in support of the proposal, thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Um, hi commissioners, uh, I used to be, sorry, I used to be a staff member here, and I've also worked in the National Zoning Atlas, uh, so I know an annoying amount about zoning, it's not a fun trait. Um, I live in the Woodbine neighborhood, um, so just a little bit about me, um, I spent a lot of my childhood in Richland West End, um, which is a neighborhood I could never imagine affording again. Um, partially, honestly, largely to do with single-family zoning. When my partner and I decided we wanted to buy a house, Woodbine was honestly one of the only urban neighborhoods we could afford on two government salaries. And I'm so glad we moved here, because not only did I take a ten-minute bus ride to get here, but I can walk to two small grocery stores and so many good restaurants and a community center and a library. Um, with the remainder of my time, I'd like to talk through some common arguments against this rezoning. Um, first, folks are gonna say this is for developers. I would like to say a developer built everyone's house, so like, let's not throw them under the bus. But no, the current system of just going property by property and rezoning benefits developers who know the game and have the money and skill to navigate it, this rezoning benefits property owners by giving them the same option. I, as a staff member here, have hosted many a community meeting, and I can tell you, hosting community meetings doesn't make housing supporters and rarely increases zoning understanding. The folks who show up to these meetings have time to do so and tend to be unrepresentative. Harvard social scientist wrote a whole book about it, it's called The Neighborhood Defenders, and it basically concludes that these types of hearings that we're in right now are not a good way to gauge feedback and can easily be gained by opposition and are a huge reason why we don't have enough housing. Second, folks are gonna say just put more density on the corridors, and we know that people wanna live in our neighborhoods, why can't we make room for people in our neighborhood? Why are we punishing people and forcing them to essentially live on a highway if they can't afford a three-bedroom home? The tide is turning on zoning, we're talking about this nationally, it's time to take action, thank you so much for your time.
Ma'am, will you state your name, please?
Oh my gosh, I'm so sorry, I just went into that and didn't even state my name, Olivia Rancine.
Thank you, welcome.
Hello, I'm Alan Smith, uh, my property's on Alberta Street. Um, I wanna echo Councilwoman that, uh, the R twenty and the R forty, I think both are needed, gonna get a little bit lower here. Um, you know, the, I don't know if compressing it to a smaller zone is, has beneficial, because density is the answer to affordability and, uh, public transit is more doable if it's supported on its side, so we're not gonna get better transit if we don't bring people into the areas that would use it. And I agree with the guy, I think, uh, quarter mile's a short distance to walk to a bus, I would, I think most people would walk much more. Um, yeah, uh, this neighborhood, it needs to go to Woodbine, you know, Radnor, Glencliff two-point-oh, it's, we can't have this same, uh, zoning in twenty, thirty years, and I like that she's trying to get ahead of the ball by saying, let's, let's decide what the future is gonna look like here, instead of letting developers tear down houses and build pe- houses that people can't afford and making it less affordable, let's get ahead of it so we can have density, we have a sixteen-hundred square foot cap that'll help it, um, not get out of hand, you know, so no one's gonna build a million-dollar condo, you know, it, it can only go so high if it's small like that. Um, so I think, I think that's smart, she's thought ahead on all that. Um, plus, the higher density is gradual, so it will give tax dollars time to catch up in infrastructure, time to improve. Um, Alan Smith, thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
My name's Harvey Rogers, I live in the sixteenth district and I'm a native Nashvilleian. I've lived here, I was born in a Baptist hospital up there, I've seen growth. Uh, I first lived over at Mulberry on, uh, Fourth and LaFett. They tore my house down, tore our house, my family's house down for four-forty. I went through that. But I also learned from all of these seventy-three years that I have been a Na- Na- Nashvilleian. I know people come in and enjoy going, moving different places, things like that. But I know that where I live now, I live in, I'm against zoning. And big houses, doubles, I like small ones, my wife can't walk very, now, you don't want all these houses that you know. But everything that's been here now, I've seen people gripe about taxes being raised, prices going up on the houses, so much stuff like this. Uh, I think it's time to calm it down. Instead of rezoning stuff, just learn, like she said before, back in the day, a lot of things wasn't done. Well, it's happening, too much is getting done. It needs to be on an evil level, to learn from past, learn for the future. But the only thing I can say is, I know I'm gonna be paying triple my taxes. And I'm seventy-three years old now. Some of these people's talking about coming in, their schooling, different things, stuff like that. Yeah, it's, it's hurting them too, you know, but people come in. That's...
Thank you, sir.
That's all I need to say.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Make sure we get everybody, alright? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? If everybody line up behind the microphone, we appreciate it. And make sure that, make sure that you state your name and go ahead. So everybody needs to be quiet, though. Everyone needs to be quiet, though, so we can get to everybody, alright? Cause it's gonna be too loud, alright? Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Colin Ireland, I live on that map. Um, a lot of good arguments on both sides here, uh, I think Ginny's coming from a good place. However, she said she's been doing individual rezoning, but her district hasn't grown at all. Uh, she said she's met with lots of people, but couldn't get people together, so she had to submit a radical plan to get our attention. Uh, s- something's going on here. Um, and it sounds like if this doesn't get shot down tonight, it could potentially get approved by default. Um, she has our attention now, so I would ask that you shoot down the plan and the substitute plan so that now that she has our attention, we can actually work together, put together a plan as a community that's less controversial and come back to you all with a more already pre-agreed-upon plan. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Hi, my name is Brandy Burnett, and I'm on, uh, Rose Street on the Foster E. Thompson Lane side. Uh, I'm opposing the rezoning plan, uh, that Ginny's presented as-is, with also concerns of the alternate plan, uh, recommendations by the, uh, committee. My home is the second oldest home on our section on the street, it turned one hundred this year, with two other homes the same. My great-grandfather participated in those builds and we have been in that home since conception. Generations of our family have been in this home for the last hundred years. For my home, the alternate plan on Rose Street is there are only nine houses now that would be affected in the recommendation. One side of the street from Foster to Miller, and those are the nine oldest homes on the street, built in nineteen-twenty-four to nineteen-forty-five. All of these homes are in their original build structure and well-maintained for the last eighty to a hundred years. And I'd hate to see these homes that have stood the test of time to be torn down, I would like that to be a reconsideration. Now, I think many of us in the neighborhood agree that we do need some change to improve the neighborhood, but we want thoughtful change with transparency, community participation, and steps of growth, not one big giant leap. Our infrastructure is not equipped at this time to handle such an extensive rezoning. We're going from a single homes to RM twenty and forty without careful, proper planning, we are only throwing in more bodies into an already congested area of traffic concerns, parking issues, minimal sidewalks, crowded schools, and odor sewer and storm drainage systems. Our community has not felt like that we have been asked to participate in this, we actually just had a first meeting on last Thursday before this vote, and we would, we feel that our voices didn't, are not being counted for and feels a bit of a disrespect to our district, thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Hi, I'm Mitch Miller, I live on, uh, Radnor Street in Glencliff. Um, Planning Commission, thank you for having me today, it's my first time attending a session, and I wish it were under better circumstances. The facts of this plan are as follows, I received a Planning Commission notice overlay five days before the first community meeting happened. The community meeting was held on a holiday, had standing room only flowing out the back door, there was no parking available, I had to park illegally to attend. Residents were told they were not allowed to ask questions on-site. A week later, I'm here. We're here at Planning to talk about a proposal that would radically alter our neighborhood. Residents feel blindsided and in the dark on how a zoning shift of this size could get this far without their consent. Make no mistake, this proposal as it stands is a license to level. R forty and R twenty is too sweeping of a change to delve out in one blow. This does not address resident concerns like actual walkability, like infrastructure for stormwater runoff. I recently had an expert come to my house to determine how much stormwater runoff, for every two inches of rain, it's two thousand two hundred and fifty gallons of water that pours from the city street onto my property, bypassing the culvert. Now, I would ask that the commission vote no on both of these proposals, because in that map, it is incorrect, in the R forty zone where I live, there are no alleyways, there's a forty-foot Arizona Cypress in the middle of what was an alleyway forty, fifty years ago. So we don't have the infrastructure that even the commission has proposed would be a good reason to bring R forty, let's at least get accurate maps if we're gonna make a decision of this magnitude. And I would ask that we have more meetings with our community, thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening commissioners, and thank you for your time and my opportunity to speak here this evening. As an introduction, my name is Irene Kelly, I've been a resident and a homeowner in the six- sixteenth district for twenty-three years. I've been a licensed real estate agent for seventeen. I have reviewed the planning staff recommendations and I find that RM forty and RM twenty is too aggressive a destination. Planning staff made recommendations Monday and removed RM twenty designated areas, but largely left intact the RM forty areas. Whether you live in RM twenty or forty or neither, we know RM forty would impact our negat- our neighborhood negatively. Um, I would like to say that as a Realtor, Nashville does not have a housing crisis. Nashville's population has dropped the last two years in a row. One thousand four hundred and fifty new private housing units were authorized by building permits just February of twenty-twenty-five. There are fifteen thousand three hundred units currently under construction. Four hundred and eighty-two homes are currently on the market for sale under three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There are well over one hundred homes for sale under two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Nashville has a record supply of rentals, apartments are setting on the market and offering incentives and free rent to entice people to rent. Supply does not solve real estate prices, it has been proven time and time again to raise home prices. Taxes and displace lower-income and lower-middle-class income families. Urban renewal was a disaster and this is a disaster for our district and Nashville as a whole. Before you believe the statistics that are given for this massive growth prediction in Nashville, often the quotes are really the Nashville Metro Service area. This is not Nashville, it includes nine counties surrounding Nashville, Cheatham, Dixon, Rutherford, Sumner, Troughtail, Williamson, Wilson, Bedford, Mari and Lawrence, counties, all of them. This does not give clear picture of what we are base- basing major decisions on, this is simply a money grab for developers, most of them from out of state. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Hi, I'm kinda nervous about this, my name is Adora Bruce, I do live in the district, I'm a Nashville native and I have lived a lot of other places, uh, both out of the county and close, when I was a young person, I didn't expect the city to provide my housing close to where I worked, I knew I was gonna have to earn that. And I did, I did earn it. So now, I'm seventy-three years old, and it's fine if you say I don't look that old, but I am that old, so, and I hear, a lot of what I heard tonight has to do with walking and transit. I'm for those things, I love that our community is doing those things, but doesn't benefit me, because I'm no longer able to do that. And unfortunately, in a lot of areas, that's true. And in the sixteenth, there's a couple things, one, we're not against helping with the affordable housing, we would like to, but we want a say in it. What I heard tonight was the most, and I've been to every meeting that I knew of, what I heard tonight is the most I've heard about it. You know, and I, I learned more about it and I still am confused. We need more time, we need to ask you to defer this, let the community get together, because again, we're not against it. And, and the people who say, well, we're a good place to put it, well, they haven't seen our yards, they've been driven down Nolan'sville Road, well, some of them have, cause they talked about the tire stores and the auto places and the vape stores, I go to the vape stores, by the way, but, but we have too many of them, and, and instead of the type of things we want, like, and we don't have walkable grocery stores, we just don't. So a lot of what you heard in favor of isn't exactly true, and I ask you to defer this and let the community work on this, thank you.
Welcome.
My name's Sherry McCall and I have lived in my little house on Wingate for twenty-three years now. I was fifty years old when I bought my first house as a single mom, so I kinda can't handle the people coming up crying about, cause they can't buy a house. My children built a house in Murray County, cause they couldn't afford Nashville. A lot of us have a hard time, we don't get things right away, that's not what I wanted to say, anyway. We have had zero input from our council lady, we have had very few meetings, at the meeting, she has received zero support. She wants to blame us because we're verbal when she is being duplicitous. And you hear how eloquently she talks, she is a radio personality, so she's good at speaking, I'm not so good at speaking. personality. So, she's good at speaking. I'm not so good at speaking. I love my neighborhood. I love the people in my neighborhood. I am 72, 73 almost, and I live alone. I don't ever have to worry about anything. All I have to do is pick up my phone and say, yo, I fell in the yard. Would you come get me? This is a fantastic place to live. Sticking four and five and six more houses per houses is insane. Me walking down the road, I can't do it. If I could and a car came, I get to leaping ditches that are three feet deep. This isn't a real, I'm glad you're listening to both sides because this is difficult. It's not real easy or as simple as she makes it sound. What about my equity?
Ma'am, address the chair. Thank you.
What about my equity? What about other people's equity? We've worked hard for these homes. We've lived a long time in these homes and we want to stay in our homes. I cannot afford to build another house in my backyard. The tax increase will force me out of my home. That's all I want to say. Thank you all so much for being here.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome.
I'm William Weeks. I, I do appreciate the commission recommending and disapprove the submitted proposal, but I'm against both proposals. Somewhere hidden in there is a Trojan horse, mostly for developers. Not a lot of this property is going to equate to being able to add more homes on them. A few of us have them big enough to do that, but I'm not in the overlay. But I think it'd be a good idea if we had more time to submit some ideas and have a community consensus on what might be practical for us. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. My name is Barbara Clinton. I live on Peachtree Street in the district in the 40 acre, 40 homes per acre area. I've been in the neighborhood for 43 years. I love the neighborhood. It's magnificent. I appreciate that we need to grow. Density will help us in terms of our transportation. However, this particular plan was created without any involvement, any serious involvement from the neighborhood and you'll hear more and more about that. There were meetings where our participation was actively discouraged and so we're not happy with the way it happened. But now you're looking at the proposal. We appreciate the revisions that the planning staff made to the proposal. They're better. But my main concern is that all of this housing that gets constructed is probably not going to be affordable for the people who want to move into our neighborhood who we've already heard from. It will be expensive housing. It will be new housing. We are in a neighborhood now that has a great deal of older housing. That's one of the things that makes our neighborhood distinctive. It's small homes. They're affordable if they're sold, as Irene Kelly was saying. And we're worried about a whole lot of new housing that will be beyond the capacity of our people to purchase. Ginny's original proposal would have allowed the construction, by my arithmetic, of about 16,000 units. Your report, your staff report says that you're anticipating Nashville will need 20,000 to 40,000 units over 10 years. To ask the 16th District, one of the 10 smallest districts in the city, to be the host for 16,000 new units is unfortunate. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome.
G'day, my name is William Durkin. I live at the corner of Morton and Dobbs. I've got 30 years in Nashville. My wife has 25 years on the corner where we live. I've been a Neighborhood Association President. I've been a PTL Association President. I've been the president of Local 3035 of the International Association of Firefighters in Murfreesboro. I've seen good and bad political representation. Ginny Welsh has given me the worst representation in my 30 years in this town. Metro Council is my SEC football, for real. I remember you, back in the Charlie Tyga days. Here's what I'm here to tell you. You've heard it now. How many people have to tell you? She's not representing us adequately or adequately. There has not been, as Sheri said, there's been no equity in our voice there. Sheri has, Ginny has a very limited audience. That doesn't include the five people she just besmirched who show up at all the meetings who are the sinews of my neighborhood. They are the true neighborhood leadership of my city and we are not friends. We're not pals. We disagree on a lot of things, except this. I can speak for them. They are awesome human beings and you wouldn't want to be having this conversation where they're not out there struggling 10, 15 years ago when no one knew where our neighborhood was. I will leave you with this. Twice tonight, I've heard the word firefighter used. Let me tell you, no Nashville firefighter that doesn't live here now wants to move here. No firefighter in the contiguous counties who have to get a job here wants to live here. Two reasons: cost of living and the way the government runs. Most American firefighters, and I'm an exception, are Trump-supporting, gun-oriented conservatives. Most firefighters want a backyard with some property and a place they can shoot their gun and cut the deer open. That's not Nashville. The two guys who live behind me with fireman plates, they'll flip that house and move to Sumner County. So, don't let the word firefighter ever, ever, ever be used around here without being used accurately. Walk into any fire hall, drive into any parking lot and see what the license plate say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just a reminder, I've been given a lot of leeway. Let's keep it professional and thank you.
Yes, sir. My name is Tatum Clinton Seale and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I live on Oriole Avenue in Woodbine. I've read the staff report on this proposal and I thank you for being so thorough and careful in its preparation. The Planning Commission staff analysis notes a lack of infrastructure to support drastically increased density in my neighborhood, including a need for $14 million worth of sewer upgrades. Still, the staff counteroffers a smaller, still-sweeping upzone footprint. Under the councilwoman's proposal or the staff proposal, my curbless, gutterless, sidewalkless, and alleyless block, .6 miles from Nolan'sville Road, would be upzoned to 40 units per acre. I urge that this proposal be, I wanted to say deferred, but denied in this case, until the community can be involved in the discussion. We are committed to finding a proposal that meets the needs of our district and our city. Staff notes that our area may see dramatic zoning changes back-to-back under the current proposal. The city's draft Housing and Infrastructure Study was released last month. From that draft report, the actions recommended for April 2025 are expanding availability of DADUs, amending code for single-stair buildings, and developing a proactive bonus program for affordable, income-restricted units. Stop. The final report to be released in June will include zoning update recommendations and design standards. Following the report release, I quote, "Planning Department will work with council members and their communities to identify appropriate locations for rezoning with a particular focus on working with minority communities." On the Housing and Infrastructure Study Timeline at Nashville.gov, this month and next are titled "Detailed Community Engagement." I look forward to engaging with you deeply in the coming months. I support actions to increase affordable housing in our district, including some form of rezoning and welcome changes. I request disapproval of both.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Skinner and I live in Woodbine. I'd like to say upfront that I am for large-scale upzoning across Nashville. Increasing density is essential for meeting Nashville housing needs and single-unit zoning exacerbates urban sprawl and inequity, so we absolutely need to change zoning laws throughout Nashville. But these bills and their substitutes target a single district and they disregard local community interest and input. Just as importantly, these bills only infer that greater density equals affordable housing. Economics and historical precedents prove that the truth is far from as simple as supply and demand. The current housing crisis is significant, but we also have four times the available housing units as we did at the point of lowest density in 2022. I appreciate that council, our councilperson, Zeal, has pushed this necessary change to the forefront of discussion, but she gave us no chance to have an actual say. And we have time to do this right as we plan for continued growth in all districts that immediately surround downtown. By working extensively with all their districts and communities, Minneapolis, Boston, Portland, and many other cities have found ways to rapidly increase housing while also protecting those most at risk of displacement. Unless Nashville works with all of its communities to do the same, these bills favor no one but developers and the economically advantaged. I was born and raised in Nashville and I'm grateful to call Woodbine my home. Woodbine is affordable, diverse, and family-friendly, tight-knit with a rich history, and zoned for a school with proven positive impact. Shout out to Witzit and its incredible staff. There are ways to preserve a community's culture and diversity and protect its most vulnerable while also meeting the needs of a housing crisis. I urge this commission to reject these bills until they do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Cameron Gardner. I'm a homeowner on Valerio Street in Woodbine. Oh, good. Cool. I believe RM 40 is too aggressive for my area regardless of whatever the overlay says. I believe this will destroy the fabric of this neighborhood and we shouldn't sell our identity out to developers to be the city's next architectural eyesore. Progress for the sake of progress is not progress at all. Right down the road, we've got Weddwood, Houston with RM 20 and it looks like people are living like sardines in a can on top of one another. I don't want that for my neighborhood. We heard a lot about equity in the opening remarks and I would like to say that not allowing the community to be involved in the determination of its future is not equitable. The speed at which this has come to fruition in front of all of you is not equitable and I would, I would love for you all, I will note that everybody but one person here sided with 11 to defer it. I'm asking you to deny this, to allow us to be involved in the determination of our future. To me, that is equity. So, I would beg all of you to consider that tonight.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Lynn Henderson. I'm also a homeowner in the Woodbine area and really just want to be another voice to ask for this to be deferred or denied so that we can have real community engagement. I enjoyed everything I learned at our meeting that was a week ago, but that was the first time that I even understood what the zoning meant. And I couldn't understand why me, just a few doors off of Nolan'sville Road and a 115-year-old house that's like still, still livable with one family, would go from having, you know, five per acre to 40. And when I inquired about how would we do 40 an acre, the response was, well, you can't actually get that many on there. So, I guess, yeah, I guess I'd like to know, can we do incremental zoning? Because it doesn't make sense to me to zone for something that's actually impossible to do. I'd like to see the overlay, some kind of overlay not just be about the height and the size, but have some other, some other things as well that would speak to building materials and other things like that. So, mainly, I just want to ask for more time for community engagement. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Chris Wong. First time homeowner and nervous, obviously. I was very blindsided by this. I've never been through something like this before, but I live on Radnor Street and I have a little one. And, oh my gosh, I'm getting emotional. We love walking. I love the walkability aspect of things, but like currently, our infrastructure cannot handle that. And it's unfortunate now because we want to take my kid out to ride bikes and like go for walks and we have no sidewalks. And I, and I understand, like Ginny, she had quoted something about like, we can't wait for perfection, but I just want safety. I just want some sidewalks, some infrastructure to be put in for all these rezoning changes happen. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name's David Wood and I believe this is my second or third time speaking in front of you. I had spoken last year about rezoning in the Woodbine neighborhood from RS seven and a half to R6. And at that meeting, I had expressed that, yes, I mean, we do want to allow more uses in the neighborhood, but as many people have said before me, this is a jump in eight times as many houses. And I had gone fairly in-depth with the planning department. I believe this was about two years ago. And they had discussed, well, we're looking, we're thinking about 30% of the homes in the neighborhood upzoning to R6. And they had looked and said, yes, this is a good neighborhood for potential DADU overlay, DAYDU overlay, that it does have alley access. But then, it just never went anywhere. And I feel like, right now, this zoning plan is just being driven by developers, is that there's a lot of the solutions people are asking for, like DADUs, could be accomplished in a lot less open zoning, not allowing eight times as many. Because previously, under the Nashville Next Plan, I'd understood that, you know, the neighborhood preservation policy was a big part of the considerations right now. And if you allow six times as many, eight times as many houses on one lot, that house is going to be torn down. I mean, there's no other way but the economics of it. So, part of this is that affordable housing is existing housing. He said the cheapest new place was $399. There's one on for sale for $330. So, I think existing housing needs to be, and preservation of it needs to be a big goal.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Jordan Young. I live on Radnor Street. So, my making opposition to this drastic zoning change is that Ms. Welch did not engage the community on this proposal. This rezon will drastically change the aesthetic and charm that drew me to this neighborhood and causes more strain on our already struggling infrastructure. Secondly, I don't have faith that developers will not take full advantage of this rezone and use it to maximize their profits while we deal with the increased stormwater runoff that floods our streets, yards, and homes. As someone who deals with the effects of stormwater runoff caused by rapid organization every day, I can tell you that the, I can tell you that our natural systems, as well as our developed systems, are past their max capacity and this will only make things worse. We have streams in our neighborhoods right now, Seven Mile, Mill Creek, and some other small tributaries that have already reached their max capacity. Mill Creek and Seven Mile are, have been deemed impaired by the state due to sediment. Building more and higher denser places actually increases that runoff by increasing impervious surfaces. And that will then cause those systems to degrade faster. We'll get more sediment and actually, those systems won't be able to hold that water and you'll get flooding, actually more flooding than we already have in those areas, which will go into people's yards and homes. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Timothy McInturf and I live in Woodbine. I think it's interesting that most of the people who spoke in support of this rezoning were developers who didn't even live in our district. And the few who did live in our district just wanted to build something in their backyard, like a DADU or a second structure, which I myself want to build. And I think most people in our district would be okay with a zoning change that permitted that. I look on the development tracker every day because I'm kind of a developer myself. I've built tiny homes in rural Tennessee. But most of the rezoning changes that are requested on there are for R6 zoning. So, to go from what we have now to allowing 40 units per acre, it's just too drastic of a change. And I think that the community would be happy with something in between that. And I think that the need for housing isn't enough to justify or override the desires of a community, which I feel like you've shown in the way that you voted to approve the neighborhood conservation of the community in Madison, because the community didn't want to have develop in their, in their neighborhood, even though Nashville needs it. You voted to approve and go with their desires. So, I'm just asking you to give our neighborhood the same respect that you gave theirs. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Paul Steele. I live on Ken Ross in the 16th District. I appreciate the opportunity to address you all today. I'd also like to say thank you to the planning staff for working swiftly and diligently on their staff report. There's a lot to go through. I'm requesting the commission to disapprove both the original bill and the substitute. My wife and I have lived in the community for nearly 15 years and I've seen the community, I've never seen the community genuinely desire to be involved in a discussion like I have seen in the last two weeks. The community wants to have input and it actually has really good ideas for a rezone. I've talked to hundreds of people in the last two weeks. It wants a rezone. This proposal and its substitute both lack something very significant. This proposal and its substitute both lack something very significant, community input of any kind. Uh, I'd like to address some specifics in the staff report. Um, page one forty-four and one sixty, the staff explains very well why UDO will only slow down the construction of new homes and increase the cost of those homes. A UDO should not be applied here. Uh, it should be rejected outright and if the UDO is out, so should the rezone that's being, that's being, uh, presented here. Page one forty-five, one forty-nine and one fifty-one, the staff report states Nolan'sville Pike and Thompson Lane are in the rezone area, but those corridors are not part of this rezone. This zone change plan, why not? Uh, why not just focus on that first? That's where the bulk of everything is going through. Uh, page one forty-three and one forty-seven, uh, we support the removal of RM twenty, generally speaking, from the interior of the neighborhoods, but this RM forty zoning change is too much and too fast. We all need a strategic and thoughtful comprehensive zoning plan for each council district. Each council district should be held accountable, providing its fair share of the projected new housing demand. Dumping all twenty to forty thousand, uh, houses, uh, making sixteen district there that responsibility is just not acceptable. Uh, our community looks forward to being involved in a more strategic approach to rezoning the sixteenth district and we'd love time to do that. Please disapprove.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you. My name is Don Scheres. Thank you all for your time today. I'd like to focus my comments on the process. So I think the two words I would use to describe the process is shocking and blindsided. To wake up and learn that six hundred and twenty acres, hundreds of homes, thousands of people are going to be affected by this. And from most of our perspective, it looks like this would fundamentally change this bundle of houses that we have in favor of multi-multi-units on a lot is quite shocking. There, from my perspective, has been zero solicitation from the neighbors on this. Um, the only reason I'm here today is I had a flyer on my door that highlighted something negative aspect and when I read it, I couldn't believe it. I talked to my, some of my other neighbors and none of them knew it either. So to me, something that's going to affect hundreds of people should have some version of best practices. To me, that's flyers announcing potential change, dates listed of meetings. To me, this seems like it should have four to six meetings. The first is to have this presented. Now we've got two versions. Second meeting would be for us to be able to ask questions after we've had time to absorb from the first meeting. Third would be where we maybe could give input if this is going to be changed, here's some of the change we want. Maybe the fourth meeting, you find what we have in common, we can move forward on things that were close, what were still different, we can work through and things that we totally disagree, but none of that has happened. Um, apparently there was one meeting last week, but again, myself, many of my neighbors never knew about that. Now, the way I understand it, you're one council vote away from this being passed. So I was going to conclude by asking you to decline this, but one of the other people used the term beg and that would be the term I would use. This is radical, would radically change our neighborhood. Thank you for your time. Thank you. Welcome.
Hey guys, my name is Rachel Carter and I'm a local nurse here in town as well as a Nashville native. And my biggest fear with this plan is that we are going to allow very large housing establishments in this small area that's already overrun with people. Um, I truly grieve for how big Nashville is and I wish that we could preserve what people moved down here for. Everybody comes to Nashville, they want to make it something that they left, they want a piece of their own home brought here to make change, which is fine in some cases, but in ours, I feel like they're taking away our very character because the character of the people born and raised here was to help your neighbor, neighbor and never take more than what you needed. And our southern hospitality is being taken advantage of. So I just ask that you reject both of these ideas. I would like community involvement as a homeowner. I would like, um, infrastructure. I would like to be a, a part of maybe the historical homes to help preserve what we have, because when you think of Tennessee and why people move here, you want nature, you want outdoors, you want a backyard. You don't want these huge quadplexes, apartments, row houses, whatnot. They want nature, so please just help us preserve what's left of Nashville. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Uh, my name is Jamie Agen. I am a homeowner in District Sixteen on Simmons Avenue. Uh, tonight I speak for myself and also for my wife Audrey. Uh, today I urge you to ask Councilmember Welsh to defer her bill for more community outreach. If she does not, then I ask you to disapprove her bill and its substitute. Councilman, Councilmember Welsh unveiled this bill to us, the community, a week ago tonight. Since then, I have walked approximately twenty miles through our district, leaving flyers and having conversations to make sure people know this bill exists. To a shocking extent, they do not. Please understand this, commissioners, people who have every reason to know this bill exists stand listening to me in disbelief. People who have lived here thirty, forty, fifty years, people with well-maintained homes and yards, checked the mail but missed the postcard, people saw signs and thought they applied to one parcel or a few, not thousands. I have heard people fearful of what it means for their finances, their children's safety, their elderly neighbors, their quality of life. People don't understand why they weren't told more explicitly about this. They are dumbfounded that a bill of this magnitude would not address the corridors where almost everyone wants more development and less blight. Our neighborhood is very fearful of RM twenty and, uh, and RM forty zoning, however well-intentioned. For example, in its report, the planning staff recommended that RM forty is appropriate for areas with sidewalks and alleys and left our block as RM forty. However, we have neither sidewalks nor alleys. If cars were parked on opposite sides of our street, we doubt a fire truck could even get through. To you commissioners, we just ask to be heard. If you put forward something more incremental today, the neighborhood can sustain that kind of growth, let's celebrate. Um, we've been denied a voice. We ask for a clear plan, but most of all, a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
A little nervous here. My name is Chris Kelly. I'm here with my wife and my mother-in-law and we have two properties on the, I guess, revised map. I'd like to tell you how nearby homes, uh, basically just the doubling of the density has affected us and I put this in an email also. Uh, they went from six homes, uh, from three in adjacent lots to us. So we have water runoff from those, from those homes, which runs into the base, our basement. Every time it has a medium or heavy rain, street parking is an issue. They say, you know, Ms. Jenny says that street parking is underutilized. I disagree. McCombs is nearly impassable if you park on both sides of the street. If you park on one side, it's a single lane street. Uh, I've seen emergency vehicles get stuck and have to turn around to get to Radner Towers. And I, I'm sorry, very nervous, obviously, but it's the same thing
Doing great.
that you've heard time and time again. The only reason I found out about this is because I literally walked by a sign in the neighborhood saying that this was happening and then I walked by a second sign and that got me thinking, well, why are there two signs in my neighborhood about this zoning request? That was the first time I heard of this. And then I attended a meeting and it was an informational meeting. It was not a community-involved meeting where we had input. This was an informational meeting, meeting, it was a one-way street, basically telling us that this was going to happen. So with that in mind, I'd just like you to please, please say no or disapprove both the original plan and the substitute. I think it'll have all the negative consequences that everyone before me has spoken of. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Tony Zavitt and I live on McCall Street in District Sixteen. I'm a Nashville native. I went to high school in District Sixteen and I've lived in the neighborhood since 2018. I asked the planning commission to disapprove both the proposal and the substitute. I hope the commission can give proper consideration to the many residents in the proposal footprint who have shown up to date to express their opposition. While many of us can see the need for higher density, the lack of due process on this matter is alarming and has left many of us feeling disregarded, not to mention those who still don't even know about the zoning proposal. As a matter of fact, I was actually here yesterday renewing my tags and two neighbors happened to be behind me in line who, in talking about neighborhood events such as our upcoming Flat Rock Fest, had no idea about this zoning proposal. In addition, many of us left Councilmember Welsh's Q and A last week with more questions than answers. Considering these factors, I urge the commission to disapprove both the upcoming proposal and the substitute to give us more time as a community to work with our council member. I appreciate the commission's time and consideration in this matter and everyone who showed up tonight to support and also oppose the zoning proposal. It demonstrates the importance of community organizations and neighborhood defenders contrary to some of the comments made earlier in this hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Carly Mafa. I live in the upzoning area. Sorry, I'm much better at making music than I am at public speaking. Um, or that sounded really, I'm not like that great, but, um, my time's running out. Okay, um, just this week, NES, I called NES, they told me the reason for our power outage on Monday, which lasted four hours, was an accident on our roads. The streets that our kids walk on, a vehicle hit a pole four hours Monday morning during work hours. The streets that our children walk on, mine specifically in the upzoning, it runs parallel to Nolan'sville Pike. It has no sidewalks, it has no stoplights and people use it to cut around and run and like get around Nolan'sville Pike when there's traffic, right? These kids are unaccompanied, there's over thirty a day that walk back and forth. I know this because they also sometimes go in my mailbox and I'm like, excuse me, um, but this is not on my list. Um, Mrs. Welsh's UDO plan actually specifies that there's no off-street parking required by multifamily builds. There's nothing in the plan to address the two-lane, no alleys, no sidewalks, streets that our kids walk on and the insufficient water drainage, both mine and my neighbors' crawl spaces are flooded right now. And, um, the exist, existing dangerous road conditions with the lack of street lights, there are no requirements for these existing issues to be addressed before builders are allowed to build. And there is nothing that requires the growth slowly, nothing that limits developers from buying multiple lots, which they may have the opportunity to as we are being priced out with these, with these, um, upzonings. She spoke a lot about what developers asked for, ask her for, so I want to speak to you about what our kids ask for. Safe roads, safe development, um, safety. Our schools are overcapacity, there's nothing in these that have plans for additional, um, like additions on our schools or like even the pods being drawn in, there's nothing in the, these plans for that. Um, she said her plan outlines the goal for the next few decades, but it immediately would allow for those decades of growth to happen virtually overnight. And on a personal note, Mr. Brock mentioned one percent affordability for the Hispanic and black community. Nevermind.
Thank you. Good job.
Hi, I am a Neighborhood Association president. Um, take a little more time. Um, good evening commissioners, my name is Alexa Little and I live in Glencliff and serve as the president of the Glencliff Neighborhood Group. I'm here tonight on behalf of neighbors who were completely excluded from this proposal. Let me start with what we know. Planning staff has already recommended disapproval on the zoning overlay as submitted because it does not align with the character of the neighborhood or align with Nashville Next. That alone should speak volumes. Planning did propose an alternate version of the overlay, one that covers a smaller area, but let's be clear, I don't necessarily support that version either because it was still created without meaningful community input. Let's talk about that. There was a mail notice, but it was sent after the proposal had already been filed. There were two community meetings, but neighbors were to submit questions in advance. That's not dialogue, that's not inclusion, and that's not how community engagement should work. The alternate proposal also refers to properties with alley access, but much of Glencliff and Woodbine do not actually have the alleyways that are on that map. This isn't just a planning oversight, it reflects how disconnected this entire process has been from the actual conditions of the neighborhoods it would impact. The corridors where Nashville Next actually encourages increased density remain untouched. Instead, this plan targets established residential streets where infrastructure like sidewalks, drainage and schools are already under pressure. The design overlay introduces new building requirements, but offers no benefits in return. There's no sidewalk commitments, no parking requirements, no tree canopy protections, no investments in public spaces or our already weakened, uh, infrastructure system. We understand that Nashville needs more housing. We understand that growth is necessary, but what we cannot accept is a top-down developer-forward strategy that silences the very people who live in the neighborhoods being reshaped. Let's be clear, everything in this proposal is designed for the people who might live here later. And let's make no mistake, we've been told this plan will be echoed around other neighborhoods in Nashville and if you approve it here without process or participation, it sends a message to every neighborhood in the city that public input is optional and neighborhood in, identity is expendable. As of today, in addition to the letters you've received and the neighbors in this room, over seven hundred and fifty residents have signed this change.org petition opposing this overlay, not because they oppose growth, but because they oppose how it was done. The overwhelming concern isn't just about density, it's about the process. So tonight, we're asking you to go further than staff recommendation. We're asking you to disapprove the submitted overlay, disapprove the alternate overlay and do not advance zoning that skips over people it affects. Wait for the results of the housing and infrastructure study coming out in June, give neighbors a seat at the table and let's plan with people, not around them. Neighborhoods are the core of everything Nashville is and ever will be. They are the soul of this city and above all, everything should start and end with neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Remember what we said, we made a deal, no clapping. Okay. It's okay.
Hi, I'm Rachel Williams and this is my rather insistent sidekick here, Kova, who's interested in this process as he's watched a lot of these details play out over the past few days at our home, um, and been involved in the conversations too. So I was born and raised in Nashville and I have deep ties to the sixteenth district with my family moving to the Radner neighborhood when I was six. As an adult, when I moved back to Nashville to raise my own family, I knew this neighborhood was where I wanted to be. We bought our home in Glencliff in 2021. As a resident of the sixteenth district, I strongly oppose this plan, especially given that there has been little to no attention to due process and community input, with, might I add, a gross misrepresentation and exaggeration of her community efforts by Councilmember Welsh here tonight. Please let me be clear, I understand the need for increased density within the city of Nashville and I value the importance of creating affordable housing, but it is paramount to do so strategically, with transparency, ample community involvement and prioritizing residents' needs over developers' interests and desired concessions. This plan is simply too much, too fast for District Sixteen. What is being proposed here will certainly test our city's ability to maintain and strengthen our infrastructure. Even in your staff notes for today's meeting, you cite this proposal as having a fiscal need of thirteen point eight million dollars from the outset. Council, Councilmember Welsh's approach is build it first and figure it out later. Again, it's too much, too fast. Specifically, I'm asking the planning committee to completely disapprove this plan until we can consider and include more of the following. Greater community input and buy-in. Specifically, look at opportunities on Nolan'sville Pike, which you will note was completely omitted from Welch's housing plan, and seek to rezone these commercial parcels for multi-use thereby increasing housing distance, density and leading to improvements in services and amenities. While I, ah, I lastly would like to conclude, the sixteen should not be the guinea pig for the experiment of district-wide rezoning measures. Thank you for your time.
Welcome.
My name is Steve Sanders. I live on Wheeler Avenue. I've lived there for sixty-nine years, uh, and I've walked to school all my life, so it's always been a walkable neighborhood as far as I, my mother was concerned anyway. Uh, but, uh, but, uh, as the lady before mentioned, uh, this planning staff mentioned in their report that they would require thirteen point eight million dollars in the sanitary sewer improvements. Uh, and as you probably noticed, a lot of the people who spoke in favor of this were people who were not residents of the sixteen district or were developers. Uh, and what I can't understand is according to the planning staff's signage map, there was a hundred and thirty-eight signs to be put out and I'm sure there were thousands of notices to be sent out. And I would like to know who paid for all this. Is this taxpayer money or is this the developers behind this? There's too many unanswered questions and just like the previous speakers before me, my neighbors were not aware of any of this. Uh, so the, the community has not been included, uh, in these decisions. Uh, and we appreciate the good work the staff did, uh, in their substitute plan, but I, I would recommend disapproval of both, both plans. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Don't throw up. All right. Good evening, my name is Lauren Tolino, and I own a home on Kenross Avenue. I have read the planning staff recommendation made Monday and believe the RM twenty designation is too aggressive without also addressing the infrastructure needs in the area, especially parking and walkability, and lacks the inclusion of the Nolansville Pike corridor in this planning recommendation. The following opinions are paraphrased with the 2011 Nolansville Pike market analysis. Nolansville Pike asks as the front door or face of neighboring residential communities, and as such, the appearance of these corridors impacts the overall marketability, value, and quality of life in the adjoining neighborhoods, and should be part of this drastic rezoning conversation. We need a thoughtful redevelopment plan implemented that addresses redevelopment, including and beyond the corridor onto adjacent streets, and integrated with neighboring residential communities on a scale that can anchor broad-based revitalization. This type of development helps distribute traffic, parking, and create safer, walkable, mixed-use districts. The current plan is a broad increase of residential density without the necessary infrastructure improvements, especially affecting our parking and walkability. Beyond the corridor in our neighborhoods, we need diverse housing options with supportive infrastructure. We barely have any alleys, we have one active sidewalk project that'll finish next month with none in the pipeline, our roads are narrow two lanes with ditches that reduce to one lane when folks park on the street, and our neighborhood is a giant cut-through for many of over twenty thousand commuters that use Nolansville Pike daily. This proposal does not address parking, which is extremely driveway-dependent on these lots, that under this proposal can now be split to accommodate additional housing and thus additional cars. At this time, I ask the Planning Commission to disapprove this.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Kevin Daly, and I live in Woodbine. I'm very concerned about this neighborhood-focused plan to gentrify my neighborhood via upzoning, to disrupt the community character pursuit of, well, what exactly is gained by this? And what compensates us for our loss? The staff report describes the community plan as calling for maintaining the general character of the community and neighborhood. But this needs to go back in the oven to be baked a lot more. It's not ready. This isn't proposing radical change, over time, it's demolishing the community we built. I've received no notice of outreach meetings, there's been no notice of listening sessions, no notice of community meetings. What type of process is this? Notice one week before a commission meeting for a six-hundred-acre overlay zone? This is not okay. The report reads, quote, "Accomplishing housing goals through an urban design overlay may have unintended consequences and contrary objectives," end quote. I would sure agree with that. The staff report in particular calls out the traffic issues. There are a lot of children here, including my two daughters, and there's narrow or no sidewalks, and drives, cars drive like crazy down the street. There's no traffic study that's been conducted, no analysis of how to ensure disabled persons are able to maintain mobility with these changes, and so much is just missing here. It's time to do the right thing and just stop this. This is a bad process, this is bad policy. Gentrification is not the Nashville Next planning vision, we can do better. Therefore, I request your commission vote down this proposal in its entirety. This is bad urban policy, bad public policy, and is clearly being rejected by the residents most impacted by this. Thank you for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Chris Remke, and I don't live in these neighborhoods, but I am a, let's call it an advocate for this group. I spent my life here, twenty years as president of Hawkins Development Company, for the last fifteen years I've, I've spent my time mostly out of town, working with developers to figure out if projects are go-no-go projects, and are they doable, and how do they perform? I find great contradictions in this whole conversation that goes on these days, and, oh, I should also say, I'm looking over here at Stuart and Bob Lehman, they have more shelf life than I do. But anyway, the, I'm really, and I've also sat in your seat, not on the Planning Commission, but on the Zoning Commission, and on several others that have met in this building, but, you know, I'm hearing a neighborhood group that would, they're desiring a little evolution, what they don't want is revolution. And I think that's an insightful thing. The forty units an acre, what sets the price of property? You know, I heard a whole long list of people come up here and talk about, they'd like a home too. Were they thinking about a home that had forty units in it? That's what the developers are thinking about, and that's how they value property. And the price of property is set by the income or the revenue you can produce from it. And so this property will become far more valuable, and it'll value out people that want a single-family home. Developers are very patient. They will pool property, they'll let houses sit there, and they're happy to become slumlords for a while. And it may be that these things accomplish some of the dreams I heard people talk about, but it's unlikely. Not when you set the base zone so high that it has values for institutional developers to come in and work. Those are my customers, and I just think we should recognize that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Welcome.
Hello, good evening, my name is Sherry Sloan, and I am asking you to please, I would beg you if it helped, to please disapprove this plan in both of its forms. And so, these are just musings. Oddly, I've been called the usual lot before, many times. I have been, I was born and raised in the Glencliff area, and I have been a community activist for my neighborhood for over thirty years. I have attended hundreds, I think thousands, of hours of meetings to make Nash, to help make Nashville a better place, and to help make my neighborhood a better place. We're always fighting for crumbs, and that's okay, because crumbs eventually build a loaf of bread. There's a Kroger about a half mile from me, I can't walk to it, it's dangerous. I can't walk down Thompson Lane and make a left on East Thompson Lane, because there's no shoulder of the road. Every day on Mashburn Road, there is a line of cars from Thompson Lane to the end of the hill. There are a hundred cars at a time, that might be an exaggeration, but not really, waiting to, to go someplace. I've been advocating for a sidewalk on Foster Avenue for thirty years. There is no sidewalk, it is not safe to walk down Foster Avenue, a neighborhood with hundreds of houses and no access. Please, please vote this down and let the neighborhood come up with a plan that everybody agrees on, not just what somebody thinks that they know is best for our neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Rena Starsek, I don't actually live in District Sixteen, I'm one of the very few out of the thirty-plus community members that is speaking up for the others that will not speak up for themselves. As you knew, as you witnessed before you, you had eighteen-plus members that were supporting that did not live in this community. They were realtors, developers, and investors who are reaching out, saying that they want a home for their future, but in high-density, volume lots, that's not a home, that's not a single-family home, these are apartments, which is totally against their dream. In District Twenty-seven, we don't have sidewalks at all, but my favorite thing is, everybody walks on the street with their dogs, their families, you see little children walking, and you're able to because of the, it's not as populated with condos, apartments, or duplexes, and that is the biggest thing, and the main reason why I purchased a home where I live is because when you walk around, there aren't cars speeding through trying to get over-speed humps. There are families, dogs, children, young families, walking and enjoying their neighborhoods.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Haley Larson, this is my absolute worst nightmare. I wasn't gonna talk, so I'm winging it, which makes it worse. But yeah, I live like in the blue blob that's gonna be affected with my husband and kids. I'm a nurse in the community, and this is awful, take a deep breath. Many people have already said most of like, the fair points that we kind of are arguing against. I love, would love to see growth, I wish that this was like, inclusive, and we were kind of at the table to decide what that looks like. This does feel very rushed, it feels a little sketchy. Yeah, the infrastructure doesn't seem to kind of support the growth that they're looking for with forty units an acre. We've talked a lot about safety, my neighbors have probably seen me push the stroller with my kids in the middle of the street, because there's no sidewalks, and just, I would love to see growth, but in a more thoughtful way. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Chris Lund, I live in Woodbine, just right outside of the Blue Area, but it's gonna directly affect me. I came here to finish a neighbor's statement, she put a lot of time and effort into it, so. Mr. Brock mentioned 1% affordability for Hispanic and Black, Glencliff is not just another zip code. We are one of the most diverse neighbors, diverse neighborhoods in Nashville, with over twenty-two percent foreign-born residents, a significant Latino/Hispanic population over almost thirty percent, and working-class population and a deep sense of community. That kind of organic diversity can't be replicated once it's gone. And the fact that it exists in our neighborhood, and that this does not exist across the city of Nashville, is a direct result of community's affordability. Mr. Brock mentioned nine percent of homes affordable. On my street in the rezoning, last home sold on my street was just over two hundred and sixty thousand, wasn't new and shiny. The last house sold on my two-lane, no sidewalk street that over thirty kids walk, unaccompanied to and from schools across side streets without lights, that is, in the rezoning street was just over two sixty. It needs some elbow grease, but we're not afraid of hard work and paint. Mine needed more than most, but all the work myself, my neighbors help, of course. I live right across the street from her, I can attest that she's outside all the time, trying to make her house better for everybody. Ms. Welsh talked about a rich urban neighborhood, again, we are suburban. This does not give single homeowners the same opportunity as developers under her UDO seven point seven, single-family ISR under UDO is four point, four point four, meaning they can't build as much as a multifamily. I work off Foster Avenue for a big, big company. It takes me, just the other day, going down, down twenty-four, it took me twenty-five minutes to get from Foster to Thompson Lane. You wanting to add more people on top of that, more diversity, more density, that's ridiculous, it's not gonna work, it's just gonna make traffic even worse.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. I promise I'll put it back in the yard.
We won't find you.
My name is Betty White, I live in Woodbine, I too am a native Nashvillian. Last Thursday, in good faith, I attended a public meeting called by District Sixteen Councilmember Jenny Welsh. I understood the topic to be District Sixteen rezoning. Over one hundred, and tonight she says there were actually maybe a hundred and thirty of us, fill the room. I believe, like most of them, I showed up expecting to receive information about a major decision that would affect not only my house, but my home, not only my house and home, but my son's home as well. I shared my concern with Jenny after the meeting, that I actually felt quite disenfranchised after this so-called community meeting. At that time, I presumed positive intent on her part, and maybe she just didn't realize how the meeting was conducted. One week later, this Thursday night, I am not the same Nashvillian that I was last Thursday. I have not stopped studying zoning since last Thursday. Last Thursday, I had not read Nashville Next, to be honest with you. I just heard my councilperson continue to give the dire warnings about the end of the world as quoted in Nashville Next. I've now read Nashville Next, and I truly believe my councilman has offended the eighteen-thousand-plus Nashvillians who participated in over four hundred and twenty public meetings to pull together Nashville Next. I truly believe they would be appalled by how we came to find ourselves tonight in this situation. I still don't understand the rationale. I asked at the meeting what the rush was, I've yet to hear an answer. I am so touched.
Thank you, ma'am.
Dave, will you come and get two minutes for me?
It's a loyal husband. Hopefully he's husband.
Say that you give me your two minutes.
Oh, yes. Ma'am, you can't, we can't transfer minutes, we're, unfortunately, it's not in our rules. So you can, you can hand him the speech, show him, and unfortunately, that's just our rules, you know, we, if I did it for you, I'd have to do it, we would have to do it for everyone else. Well, he can have two minutes. Dave Neal, I live in Woodbine, and I've learned a lot in the past week, too. Here we go. I don't think that's consistent. But what I, what I think we've heard tonight is that this train is going very, very fast, and people who needed to get on it have been left at the station, and that's very unfortunate. One of, one resource that these neighborhoods have that's been alluded to, but overlooked in the presentations, is the people. That's the best resource that these communities provide, and, and they have been disrespected. And I, I think, I think, I want you to stay.
This is what our mayor said.
I want you to stay.
And say this part, too.
Mr. Mayor, I want to stay, too.
And so do the neighbors who choose to live in Woodbine.
Yeah, and so do those that choose, I think you heard that from both sides, that, that people wanted, wanted this, they know about the density, they understand that, but this is their place, and they don't want people, you can't just pat these people on the head and say, it's gonna be all right. No, they want, they want to participate, they're good citizens, they want to keep being good citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Jim Sealan, I live on Peachtree Street in Woodbine, right in the zone, a block off of Nolansville Pike. We have lived there for forty-three years. We came because Woodbine had the kind of home we wanted to raise our children in. We've got room to do that. We've worked the whole time with the Woodbine Community Organization, which has now evolved into affordable housing, major project contributing to this city, and has been for decades. I, I'm reluctant even to get out because I'm a little on the shy side, so you'll have to excuse me. But in reading the mission statement of the Planning Commission, Woodbine has been working on all these issues all these years. We're doing it. If it's not broken, why try and fix it? That's not gonna work. We do have room for growth with the zoning as it is now. We can improve, increase the density of Woodbine with the zoning the way it is. Speaking for all those who have already spoken here tonight, I hope you got the sense that we were not involved. Now we're way down the legislative road, and evidently, a vote can come up very soon that's beyond what we can deal with. All we want is the time to have a reasonable, thorough, appropriate planning process.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Welcome.
My name is Jenny White, and I live in Woodbine. I've raised three children in Woodbine, and been a part of the community, and I want to say that I, a lot of my neighbors have no idea that this is going on, so I feel like there's been a failed source of communication, that there needs to be a better way to reach out. I myself have called, and all I got was an automated message, and I was told I would be emailed, I've not received a single email. So I feel like there's a lot of gaps in how we could reach everyone, and I'm also standing on behalf of my Hispanic neighbors, which I don't think they understand what's going on, nor do they know that they can come and have a voice, and so I feel like that's really important. I feel like there's a lot of people. I feel like there's a lot of people that still don't know. And I would like you to consider opposing, or I'm opposing, asking you to oppose it, that I don't agree with what is being proposed. I do feel like it's too much, too fast. And I enjoy having a backyard for my two little dogs to run in, and a yard for my children to have cookouts. So, I feel like that's really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing that, or about a council lady?
Thank you, commissioners, for your time tonight, and thank you to the planning staff for supporting the RM40 portion of this proposal, especially when you've been so deep in the critical work on housing and infrastructure and the East Bank, the list just goes on and on. District 16 is changing. I get requests to rezone all the time, and the bulk of them come from residents. They do not come from developers. I believe the rezoning and the UDO are the best available tool to manage the change that is coming to District 16 and to align with the vision set out in Nashville Next. Some say this zoning proposal is too much, but doing less will not result in the types of housing that we need, the variety of housing. This plan doesn't force change. It gives longtime homeowners options to add a small unit for family, to downsize and stay in the neighborhood, or to use their land in new ways that reflect the community values, or to do nothing. You can keep your backyard, you have to do nothing. The standards are based on existed, adopted plans, not some outside idea, but Nashville's own vision. We have the opportunity right now to right-size zoning for the Nashville of today and tomorrow, and I urge you to support the plan as submitted. RM40 is not radical. It's a district described by Nashville Next as appropriate for urban neighborhoods, and Planning agrees with the RM40 area of this proposal. Their own study, the Middle-Scale Housing Policy Review, analyzed the zoning code and found that RM40 is the district most likely to result in middle-scale housing. That's because of the density it affords, and that is why I am proposing it. I'm excited that Planning is working on housing and will be presenting recommendations in June. But the truth is, there is no guarantee that those new zoning districts will be adopted or what my district actually needs. RM40 is the recommended existing district for creating middle-scale housing, and it's a tool we already have. And the approach was modeled basically on Portland, which has used this strategy with great success to get that middle-scale housing and smaller units to accommodate the varying types of people's needs. Planning's Housing and Infrastructure Study also found that if we restrict the supply of housing in relatively affordable neighborhoods like those in District 16 through single-family zoning, that is only going to push out existing communities. The study recommends allowing moderately-priced homes in neighborhoods like ours in order to address equity, and that is what I am trying to do here with this proposal. I do have additional meetings planned and want to continue the conversation surrounding housing and zoning in my district, but not as a means to delay action. We have waited 10 years since Nashville Next, and we are suffering from that today with our housing situation. So, I am asking the commission to make a movement on the application as submitted or on the Planning Department's recommendation of the substitute, if you prefer. Thank you.
Thank you, council lady. Seeing no one else switch and speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Vice Chair, you're recognized.
Wow. This is a whole lot to take in. I guess I'll start with like my, a little bit of my personal connection here. When I first moved to Nashville 25 years ago, one of the very first people I met was Kathy Dodd, who led the Woodbine Community Organization located in the old Public Health Center in Woodbine. I spent many, many hours at Woodbine doing a lot of homeowner education and free tax assistance, and served on the board of the organization for many, many years, and really felt like I got to know that neighborhood well. One of the most memorable events I had was the Flat Rock Old Timers Breakfast, where I learned how to make fried cornbread, which is not something that someone from California knew how to make. And learning from all of these older women who were in there, who had attended school there, and could tell me this history of the Woodbine neighborhood, I guess when it was Flat Rock, really, really made an impression on me. You know, coming, I recognize that there was a lot of opportunity, you know, 25 years ago to improve the housing stock, but there was also incredible community and neighborhood pride. And, you know, to my knowledge, looking around this room, I think that that still very much exists in the Woodbine area and the surrounding neighborhoods. So, you know, this has a personal tie to me. I also want to acknowledge that I fully support a lot of the goals that the council lady has, and I guess I should note with Kathy Dodd, she became one of the largest advocates for affordable housing in the city of Nashville, and that, I certainly carry that forward. I was with her when the downzoning occurred that took away all of the duplex opportunities in many of the communities, and I saw what a huge impact that had on our ability to develop new affordable housing. So, if Kathy was with us, I know Kathy would want to see more opportunities to restore some of the zoning, you know, more zoning opportunities, more opportunities for affordable housing, particularly in the neighborhood where she did a lot of her work. So, I do, I support the goals of the councilwoman. I do think there are opportunities in the Woodbine area to create more density and create more housing opportunity. But I also think that a blanket rezoning like this does open the door for a lot of risk of gentrification. You have homeowners that have been there for years. What they need is opportunities to improve their homes. So, if we really want to try to do things to stabilize the neighborhood, I think there are things that the council needs to consider in terms of owner-occupied housing renovation programs and things like that, that will help existing residents stay in their homes and participate in the change in this neighborhood. I don't see protections here that would address the concerns of gentrification. I know the UDO will have some impact on design, but it's not going to keep housing affordable, and it's not going to keep opportunities there for people who are currently living in that neighborhood. This is one of the few areas that we have left in Nashville where we do have affordable housing for homeownership. I know that's one of the goals and one of the findings that we've had in the preliminary Housing Affordability or the Housing and Infrastructure Study, is that we're doing okay with rental housing, we're not doing well with owner-occupied housing, and there are not many neighborhoods left like this where you still do have some opportunity for affordable homeownership. So, I feel like it's very, very important that we seek to preserve that. Overall, though, I think my biggest concern with all of this is the process. And I do believe that this, that the councilwoman has the right intention, and she said this was supposed to be a community-led process. But in my experience, when we've seen community-led processes to do major redevelopments across the city, we haven't had a room this full of people who oppose it. I think that when people come, you know, normally this kind of a process, and I kind, this is where I'm going to shift to questions, but normally I see us driving this process a little bit more. So, I wondered if you guys could talk a little bit more about how we have approached similar communities like Wedgwood Houston, or even, I'm thinking Highland Heights. I'm thinking about some of the major areas where we spent a lot of time, almost looking block by block, of what made the most sense for redeveloping those areas.
Hi, certainly. I don't know which microphone. I think this is the one I'm going to speak into. I can speak a bit to Wedgwood Houston, which you just brought up as, and I know that we mentioned that a bit in our staff report as well. So, Wedgwood Houston-Chesnut Hill started out as a small-area plan. That kicked off in around April of 2018 with some events in the area. There was a series, there was a task force group, a series of community events and meetings and a week-long charrette, which took place in April of 2019. The first task force kickoff was in August of 2018, and then there was a week-long charrette in April of 2019. The plan was ultimately drafted, and the recommendations that came out of that plan were from those community meetings and the community engagement, the task force engagement that took place. And that was adopted in October of 2019. So, it started around officially August of 2018, adopted by you all in October of 2019. One of the tools that came out of that effort as an implementation tool was an urban design overlay. And that urban--
Could you try again?
Sorry, my phone, my watch is talking to me. One of the things that came out of that as an implementation tool was an urban design overlay. And the Wedgwood Houston-Chesnut Hill urban design overlay, which also accompanied, was accompanied by a base rezoning, was adopted in April of 2021. And so, a couple of, a year and a half or so after adoption of the plan, I will note that the in-between time was the height of COVID, and so, there was likely some slowdown with the adoption of the UDO due to that, just because it was a little bit more difficult to sort of get together and work on things with communities. But the UDO, the urban design overlay, accompanied with a base rezoning for primarily residential areas in Wedgwood Houston-Chesnut Hill, not the mixed-use area that most of us sort of think about as the heart of Wedgwood Houston. But that UDO was adopted in 2021 and was an implementation tool of that small-area plan.
And planning led that process, right? In conjunction with--
Planning, yes. Planning led both of those processes, the community, the small-area plan, as well as the drafting of the UDO.
And can you talk about what involvement we've had to date with this, with this effort? Have we been at community meetings, or?
We have not been at community meetings. We received the application, and we did review and make some comments and have some changes made to the document through that review process. We then evaluated the proposal based on infrastructure, land use policy, and then made our own recommendation based on the application.
So, that's very different than, I mean, I've actually been on the commission for quite a while now, and this is very different than any process that I have observed when we're looking at such a major neighborhood change. You know, we always have this conversation about what's in the purview of planning and what's in the purview of council, and we are, you know, I have to hold back a lot on things that I think I would love us to take on because they're political decisions that have to be led by council. But I feel like this is a decision that really should at least have a voice for planning. This is a planning decision, and is not necessarily just a political decision. You know, again, I fully support a lot of the goals of why this is getting done. I know that when, that we do need more housing, I know that we're going to have to make some hard decisions. I know that this is going to be a big, challenging conversation that we have to have around the entire county about where we are going to increase density, because we're going to have to do that. And there are certainly neighborhoods that are going to be more appropriate for it than others. Along Nolansville Pike, the surrounding neighborhood around Nolansville Pike probably is an area that's ripe for this kind of redevelopment, but the same can be said around Weston, the same can be said around Dickerson Pike. I mean, we're going to have to spread out and try to figure this out across the entire county. And I think that's the point of the Housing and Infrastructure Study that's coming in June, and we're going to have some more resources available to us at that time. I mean, I have a lot of other opinions about specifics in both of these cases and questions about the actual UDO, but at this point, my biggest concern is really the process and where we have, you know, where we are today. I do not feel comfortable voting in support of this. I don't feel comfortable voting in support of the substitute amendment. I don't think the community has had any time to digest any of this. I don't think this should be going forward to a council vote in two weeks. I think it should be, you know, I think it needs to be disapproved. If anything, it should go after the Housing and Infrastructure Study comes out, and when planning can have a bigger role in helping to do a larger community area plan that would incorporate Nolansville as well as the surrounding neighborhoods that have been targeted by this effort.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other discussion? Commissioner Dundon.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate so many people coming out and talking about this. And I agree with the Vice Chair in a lot of, and pretty much everything that she said. I think the goals, the goals are admirable and are exactly what we were talking about in our workshop in housing. But one of the first things that the council member said that concerned me was that the bill was, or that the proposal was made sort of as a method of outreach to the community, which is really, seems to be the opposite of the way we have worked with things, rather than the community input into the proposal that then would become a proposal for planning. And so, that is concerning, and I think that was echoed in the comments that were made today about people not having a plan, I mean, not having notice. And then the speed with which this is happening, I understand the need to get, to have housing quickly, but the speed with which this seems to be proceeding down the path is extremely unusual, like the Vice Chair said, and concerning, because it doesn't allow planning or us or the community members to really be involved in the decisions. And I spent some time before the meeting looking at some of the public comments that we got, and there are obviously a lot of them, but there was definitely similar themes of notice, not having a voice. There were, a number of elderly couples thought that their houses were being taken by eminent domain, thought that their homes were going to be, you know, were actually going to be destroyed. There was a lot of confusion about the 1,600-square-foot issue, a lot of questions about the plans for infrastructure upgrades, a lot of the things we heard today, but it was clear to me that there was a lot of confusion about what this even was happening in this neighborhood. And so, and then all of that, together with the fact that we have this housing study about to come out, it does seem like there doesn't seem to be a good reason, a good basis for proceeding so quickly and not waiting even just until the summer to have that input at least. But all of that said, I'm not sure where, we can't defer this. So, I'm not sure what our options are. I don't know if the council member would be willing to defer to council, or if that would be an assurance that would even be satisfactory to this body. But I'd like to hear from the other commissioners sort of what our options are.
I can help you with the process. So, I think we have very limited options at this point. It's either disapprove or approve. We can't defer it. And otherwise, it would, unless, if we do defer it, then it will be administratively approved. So, those are the options. Any other discussion? Commissioner Clifton?
I think for the benefit of the public, because I didn't remember this before this meeting, we might need to explain why it is we can't just defer it at the point where we are now.
Very good point, Commissioner. And Lisa, will you go over that in detail? Thank you.
Sure. So, as I had mentioned earlier, and I'll explain this again, the bill has been introduced. The council rules indicate that you can't have a second reading or public hearing until either the Planning Commission has made a recommendation or 30 days have passed. In this case, just simply because of when meetings fall, and it is unusual, 30 days will have passed by the time the council public hearing comes up. So, the public hearing will be able to be heard or move forward without a Planning Commission recommendation because that 30 days have passed. And then, if passed at public hearing and moves on to third reading, if you all have not made a recommendation, then the vote is as though you have approved it. And the reason that we sort of point that out is that for zone changes at the council where the Planning Commission has made a positive recommendation, a recommendation of approval, it takes 21 votes to pass. Where you all have made a recommendation of disapproval, the vote count shifts to 27. And so, there's a vote differential for things where the Planning Commission recommends disapproval.
Any other questions, Commissioner Clifton?
Not a question, but-- Not a question, but are you about to ask for a motion to vote?
No, we're still on discussion.
Okay. Um, on the positive side, I think the, this process has been sobering and it's been hard to hear because a lot of the assumptions of people who came to speak, um, not knowing us or our process or have sort of expected and, and gotten the worst from, from this process. Um, it is not normal um, to have this sort of acrimony. And I understand frankly, I understand the value that the councilwoman places on getting something done, uh, terms coming to an end fairly soon. She's passionate and sincere about what she wants to get done. Uh, having said that, there's a lot of capacity on this commission, my staff, uh, and a lot of uh, knowledge about how to visit and revisit this. Um, so I'm perfectly okay with us, uh, not, not, not voting for either one of them today, either, either one of the recommendations. But I would say that there's a lot of um, reason for members on both sides, um, members of the public on both sides to, to feel like this has been um, an eye opener for us, but also is an opportunity for us to take what we've heard here, work with you, uh, come back with more, uh, because really, um, it is a, a test of whether we're flexible enough to, to be able to address something that, that has clearly not been addressed very, very much, which is truly making more housing affordable for people through the planning process. Um, I'm just thinking this will be a good experience for us, but it's, it's uh, it's not ready for, from my standpoint, for, for us as commissioners to support even one of the uh, the options of going forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Commissioner Dundon?
Can I just ask, the staff had a comment in, in the, in their report about um, that there's a scenario where property owners in this area will experience several, several discrete and potentially significant changes to the zoning within a matter of months. And I, I think that's about the, the potential outcome of the housing study. Can you all just talk a little bit about that? Like if this passes at council, are you, are we, are we setting up the neighborhood for more changes?
I've raised that as a concern, um, with not just this proposal, but in working with several council members about large scale up zonings and down zonings that um, many of the districts that we're evaluating here, we're also evaluating in the Housing and Infrastructure Study for change. And so there is a scenario where we take forward proposals in the summer to council and ask for changes that might include changes to the bulk standards, changes uh, that would incentivize affordable housing recently enabled by the state, those kinds of things. And so if I'm a property owner in those areas, I'm experiencing whatever council decides to do in the summer, as well as the change up zone or down zone. Um, you know, in this, in this case, it's an up zone. Um, and so, you know, i- it's my view that it is important to have a holistic solution to the zoning code itself. Relying on the U D Os to accomplish that which zoning can do, to me is, is a Band-Aid. We, we tried with Wedgewood Houston to try something new and I commend the department. I was director at the time and wanted to try something new to see if we could break through, um, and allow for some smaller scale density. And um, you know, I think we've learned some lessons there. It hasn't been um, as successful in some areas as we would have desired and we need to learn from that. Um, so our goal with the Housing and Infrastructure work is to rely less on these special tools. And part of that is so that it's more legible to the community what's likely to happen. Because when it's in the code, you can look and see what the standard is. And so a lot of the confusion that we're hearing about what's required in the zoning or the U D O, those kinds of things, we've got to find a way to reconcile that there. But yes, I, I make no bones about it. I was very concerned, um, that this is the first time in some years that we've proposed uh, evaluating the residential code. And so when council asked us to do the Housing and Infrastructure Study, it was my hope that there would be a period of time where we could really evaluate those standards and evaluate what needed to happen and work with the community. But ultimately we are at advisory, um, and it is a council decision. And so as Lisa noted, we elected to review this against the policy as we would anything else, although, you know, I made clear it was my preference to wait, um, until some of that work had been done, um, so that it was more understandable.
And then just quickly lastly, if, if we vote to disapprove, does it go to council as originally proposed or does it go to council with your recommend, with your changed recommendation?
The, the bill has been filed as originally po, uh, as originally proposed and if you all voted to just disapprove, um, then we would not send our recommended substitute. You would have to take an action on the recommended substitute for us to send it over so it would just continue as originally filed.
All right. So very, very, very good conversations. Uh, I personally want to thank everyone on both sides for coming down. Um, I want to thank the council member. We, we love working with the council and um, I agree with a lot of um, of the goals of the council member, like affordability and, you know, more density and more housing types. And I think that that's something that this commission has always um, tried to strive for, uh, for. I've been on the commission a long time and so has Stuart and several others. We have some new commissioners. We have a very diverse body of volunteers that love this city. Um, the city is a very popular place and I would argue part of the reason for that is the great planning that we've done over the last several decades. Um, it's a great place and I'm proud of the, the work that the planning commission and all of the uh, citizens like we are have done and all the electeds that have done um, in the city. And I think there is tremendous pressure uh, on growth, but I've always maintained that smart growth is something really important. I've always argued that growth on corridors and in commercial centers uh, is a first priority and not in neighborhoods. And as one speaker said, our neighborhoods is what makes Nashville and I agree with that. I live in Creve Hall. Uh, we have a beautiful place in Creve Hall. Every community, every neighborhood has a special place that we all decide to live. And so it is, this is a hard job. As volunteers, here we are faced with um, people not agreeing, but I would also argue uh, that reasonable minds can reasonably differ, um, and we can find a solution. The one thing, and this has been brought up a lot, is the process. And I think I'm proud of the process. I believe um, we have won awards for the amount of public outreach that we've done on several big projects like Nashville Next. We've had, as some, as speakers have noticed, we've had over 400 meetings with Nashville Next. I was here doing that process and it was hard. And guess what? It was slow. It's, I say the planning process is like, like planting a plant. You have to have the right plant, you have to have the right for the, the community, you have to have the right um, bucket, you have to have the right soil. And it takes time to grow the plant. So that is one of the reasons, I think, why we have the housing study in front of us. We've heard that we need more density, but we need to do it in a process that makes sense and that is, has as much community input that we can have. I believe that's the Nashville way. And I know the vice chair and I and the commissioners have strived for some of the best community outreach that we can ever do. So I personally don't usually say how I'm going to vote, but I am going to vote against the proposal. I don't want to disrespect the council person, but I think that this needs to be a planning led type decision as the vice chair said. So anyone else for discussion? Are we going to need a motion? Anybody want to make a motion? Vice Chair?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Um, I mean, the, the one thing that just was stated that, that this goes forward as originally, um, as originally proposed, but with the disapproval. So, you know, that means that, that it could still proceed, um, as long as they get 27 council members to support it. I guess I would just make a plea to the council person to, to take into consideration what you've heard from all your constituents tonight as this does move forward, um, or if it does move forward. I, I think there's been a really loud voice of concern that should be listened to. Um, but with that, um, I will make a motion that we disapprove staff's recommendation um, of approving, yeah, I'm disapproving the substitute amendment, right?
I think a disapproval of the substitute and a disapproval of the-
I'm disapproving the original-
The original plan as proposed.
And staff's disapprove, uh, staff's proposed amendment to it.
That's a proper motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Sorry, could you do, you need to do those, you need to do 28A.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry.
Okay. So I will- You need to do them separately.
So on 28A, I am voting to disapprove the-
Moving.
What?
You said voting, so you have to make a vote.
I'm making a motion.
There we go. Thank you, Vice Chair.
To disapprove the plan as submitted and disapprove staff's suggested amendment to that item for 28A.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of disapproval, say aye. Posse no? Aye, one no? Six ayes, one no. Now a motion on 28B.
Uh, on 28B, I'm making a motion to disapprove, um, the, I don't know what 28A said actually, 28B said. It's the urban design, but did you have an amendment to it? No, I'm just disapproving it as proposed?
Just the same.
Okay.
We, we had amendments on both and so I would just, so for 28B, it would be to, a motion to disapprove as submitted and disapprove staff's recommendation.
Okay.
Um, amended-
That's my motion. My motion is to disapprove as submitted and disapprove staff's proposed amendments.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of disapproval, say aye. Posse no? Ayes have it. All right. So thank you, everybody, for coming down. You're out of order, please. We still have to finish the meeting. So if we, so you guys can stay or you can quietly leave. We have to finish the meeting. It won't take us very long. So we really appreciate it. Thank you. So we are in other, that concludes our items for, uh, how about we just wait a second? All right, if I could get everybody to exit the room, we still have to conclude our meeting. Uh, we really appreciate, thank you. You can stay out in the hallway though and talk all you want. All right. So we're, I, we're in other business, historic, Commissioner Smith.
Our director was nice enough to grace us with, with this meeting and I, um, no new update except that I think historic zoning is, is slowly but surely coming to grips with our new planning overlords and uh, looking, looking forward to all the synergy. Um, a benevolent, benevolent enlightened.
Thank you.
We're excited for the synergy. That's it, sorry.
Thank you. All right. Parks is not here. Uh, executive committee report, we don't have anything, do we? Okay. Um, director's report.
Uh, I want to thank all of you for your um, hard work and then Maddie, where are you? Well, Maddie is a, actually a newer staff person and, and did a great uh, job with this um, latest review and she and Bob Lehman worked really closely together. Want to thank her. Um, we're going to have several additional updates on the housing work for you. We'll, these are big documents and so I want to make sure we're presenting them in a way that you can easily consume. So I'll be looking for guidance from you about how to best do that, but I really appreciate all of your service to the city. Um, so thank you.
Thank you, Director, and thank you, team. We really appreciate it. Um, legislative update, the councilman's not here, seeing no other business, is there a motion adjourned? Right adjourned.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.